Hi, good evening, everybody. Thanks for joining us tonight. This is Aspen City Council's special meeting for June 13th, 2023. Could we have a roll call for attendance, please?
Councillor Doyle.
Here.
Councillor Guth.
Here.
Councillor Hohenstein.
Here.
Councillor Rose.
Here.
Mayor Torrey.
Here. Tonight's agenda item is the continuance of ordinance number 10. And we will try to pick up where we left off. Just for a little information for any of the viewing public, we think that we have at least about an hour and a half, perhaps 90 minutes or so, of more presentation and more detail. We would like to take public comment today, but there is no necessity for a vote yes or no today. So there's a possibility for continuance as well. With that, I'll turn it over to our team that's seated at the table.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, we're expecting about 90 minutes from the applicant of presentation and 40 or so minutes from the staff planner prior to getting to public hearing, just for the clarity for the public on timing. Thank you.
All right, good evening. I'm going to go ahead and kick this off for the record. My name is Kevin Reyes. I'm a planner with the Community Development Department. Thank you, Aspen City Council and Mayor Torrey. Just a quick recap from the last hearing. We had the applicant team, Chris Everson and Cushing Terrell, make a very robust presentation on sort of how we got here. They're going to continue to do that this evening. And as Sarah just mentioned, we have about another hour and a half of that. And then I'm going to give a 45-minute presentation, really focused on the review criteria. That's the focus of my presentation. So after that, then we'll defer to Mr. Mayor, but I believe we'll take public comment and go from there. So with that, I'll hand it over to Chris and his team and take it from here.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Right, as Kevin said, last week, you heard mostly from myself as far as how we arrived here. The design team's going to talk you through where we are and what the design looks like in terms of the proposed project. I've got Laura Doherty, project manager and architect with Cushing Terrell. Further over, we have Randy Rhodes and Nicole Olmsted, both also with Cushing Terrell. And Giles was unable to attend today. So we have, we're lucky enough to have Christine Shine with Connect One Design in Giles' place. So straight from there, we'll just have Laura go straight ahead.
Great. Well, thanks. That does bring us to, hold on. Thanks. That brings us to where we are now. So just again, that sense of the timeline. We are at that critical threshold of opening up the door to the subsequent milestones to accomplish this project.
So everything inside the development application is really wrapped around this vision statement of a stable, thriving, affordable neighborhood that's pedestrian-friendly, environmentally sustainable, connected, and welcoming, that looks, lives, and feels authentically Aspen. There's five main guiding principles. And we're going to get into some of the ways that we actually implemented pieces and parts of the design that directly addressed these guiding principles. But I just wanted to point out a couple of key components of these. So with community connection, contributing to the well-being and contentment in the day-to-day life of folks. We just understood and got that loud and clear that that's essential. Sustainability, and I'll get into that in just a second. This has been defined with three pillars: environmental, economic, and social. All three of these are needed to create strong and lasting community. Pedestrian-friendly, we're going to show through the different slides we have for you tonight, how we've emphasized people over cars. Living well, providing for residents' basic needs, and creating a safe and secure environment is central to all the design moves that you'll see tonight. And then authentically Aspen, speaking to this place, to recognition that the elements that make this place unique need to show up in the site design and the architecture. We hope to show you that tonight.
And again, these were really developed based on that community feedback. So these weren't our guiding principles. These were the principles that came out of that feedback in our meetings with you.
So jumping into sustainability, we met with many members of the community. We've met with members of the city's environmental health group, TESSA and others, where we looked at how we can really figure out what's going to be the most effective sustainability approach to take. So we analyzed seven different approaches, all listed here, and settled on Enterprise Green Community Plus as the one that really aligned with the city's goals best. And Enterprise Green Communities is specifically created for affordable housing. So it really focuses on hazard mitigation, preparedness, which requires we recognize considerations for hazards, such as wildfire, air quality, disease vectors, extreme events, loss of power, drought, mud flows, things like that. But it also focuses on cultural resilience. So we spent time talking with potential community residents that gave their feedback to us about a desire for shared community ownership, social accountability, and a sense of belonging. So we've moved through this process. We've checked off all those milestones listed there. One of the big aspects of this approach is 75% net zero. So we're absolutely on track to meet that stretch goal. We're designing around low-energy-use intensity buildings. We've enhanced the insulation and infiltration approaches. We've got energy-efficient heating and cooling systems, energy-efficient and heat recovery systems. We've identified a path forward with Aspen Electric to balance production limitations for the utility and the needs to the site using a battery system. Sorry, one question that came up was why 75% net zero? And the answer relates to the amount of roof space that we have for solar panels. And instead of making it 76.2, around number is 75%. So it roughly equates with the amount of space we have on the roofs for panels.
That's right. And I think one other question that did come up is really with this diagram here on the lower part of the screen, it's that highest peak is that sense when the most energy production happens. But we can't send that back to the utility, which is why this project envisions the battery, battery storage onsite, to then help make up for that off-peak generation of power so that we can use that power and the batteries at that point. So I know that did come up, but this does envision those onsite battery system.
Our thinking about siting and massing of the buildings goes all the way back to when we had four different schemes that were in front of council, all trying to answer the question about what's the best way to handle parking on this site. And so as we looked at those four different schemes, pivot, latch, hinge, and flange, we analyzed those against 32 different elements. So these elements are made up of our guiding principles of community connection, sustainability, being pedestrian-friendly, living well, and authentically Aspen, as well as some project feasibility components of construction costs and operations and maintenance. And as we did that, it came clear to all of us and council that the hinge scheme most aligned with those guiding principles and those other project feasibility components.
And so as you're setting off to create a neighborhood, it always is good to go back to look at what a typical city block looks like. And so this is a comparison of an Aspen city block and how it relates to the scale of the buildings envisioned here. Also, that sense of a four-story building in order to achieve our unit count. And there is precedent for four-story buildings throughout this area. And again, when we look back at that overall scale of a city block and that four-story height, that proportion is what we are looking at for this project. The overall site and orientation is represented here. Our immediate context is Highway 82 there at the bottom of the page. Across from that is the airport. We've got Aspen Business Center to the north or the left of the page, Annie Mitchell Neighborhood directly to the east, and then Deer Hill, which is our primary neighbors. And of course, Mountain Rescue that is right in front between us and 82. The siting was really, again, this approach of creating a neighborhood of streets at neighborhood scale. But that was also specifically to bring that height inboard to the center of the site, providing our standoffs or our distances from our adjacent neighbors to help diminish that scale of height. So that from the property line by Annie Mitchell, we've got an 80-foot separation, which when we get into some renderings, will show you what impact that has to have that distance and what that view begins to look like, that it doesn't really block the way it sounds like that height might get to. So really, that being that site strategy was important for locating our buildings where we did in creation of this neighborhood. And with that, Christine, I'll let you get into some more of the details of the site design.
Okay, great. Well, again, I'm Christine Shine, sitting in for Giles. And Giles just wanted me to share, and I also want to share. I live in employee housing, and I am so grateful for the opportunity to live in employee housing. My kids get to go to great schools, and it really shapes my life. So we really feel passionate and excited that we get to be working with Cushing Terrell on this project in our community. Also, I want to just thank the public. We had a big role in the public outreach, and I'm just grateful. We've taken every comment and distilled them down along with a lot of stakeholder information and obviously feedback from council. So I know people are busy, but thank you for taking the time for the feedback. All right, so this is a landscape plan. As you enter the site, you're going to see a raised pedestrian area that will be similar to what you see right outside of the Wheeler Opera House. And you just get this kind of big view into the lumberyard neighborhood with that community space there. Again, as Laura pointed out, the buildings are strategically placed inside of the site. And then they also surround these, what we're calling communal landscapes, that are appropriately sized for the density of this site. And then they also offer a separation, kind of going from a more private patio space and slowly transitioning to the public space. Also offering a multifunctional landscape. It's a small site, so serving a number of things, including rain gardens, stormwater, garden space for screening, play spaces for kids within that landscape. A few things that I'd love to point out on the site plan is the Rafta bus station, which also includes about 20 recycle stations and also a public bike wash for both the residents and the public. The entrances of the building for Building 1, which are all accessible by the Universal and ADA sidewalks and trails around Building 2. They have both ramps and stairwells. And the majority of the private patios are accessible off the street as well in Building 3. Also, to the left of the page, you'll see that space is reserved for a daycare facility in the future. And I think we can move on to the next slide. This is the pedestrian access. This was, you know, one of the priorities that Randy identified. We really worked hard with the Parks Department identifying trails. So there's a hierarchy of trails. You'll see the AABC trail, the commuter trail. And integrated here, along with CDOT, is an underpass that would go under the entrance into the site. And then the dash line just above is a shared bike lane throughout the community. And then it hooks back into that commuter trail. And then if you go north of the page, you'll see there is an Annie Mitchell connector trail. Again, we worked with Parks Department identifying the appropriate widths. This trail is about six feet wide, soft-surface trail adjacent to Deer Hill that allows that connectivity from that courtyard to Deer Hill. Okay, I think we can go to the next slide. This slide identifies a vehicular access. It's important to note, I know Chris mentioned it last time, that there will be a dedicated bus service that goes from the ABC and then comes out through this signalized intersection that is part of that 2012 CDOT access and control plan. Also, part of that plan are all of the closure of that Sage Way intersection. And then the trail is also within that CDOT easement. There's about 20 feet of grade change on this site. So we had to work hard with the fire department and streets and Haley from engineering, among others, to come up with this street system that worked well, including the placement of those garage entrances to try to maximize light into the units while also minimizing the slopes into those garages. You'll also see two hammerheads as part of Building 3 that provide fire access. And it was really, really important to us to honor that space at Deer Hill and connect that courtyard, so we were able to not have a vehicular road there. Also important to note that we really tried to maximize the acoustics and with both the carports and the buildings for those communal spaces. We worked with waste management and environmental health to locate the trash pickup points for compost recycling so that those worked well and are sized correctly. And we also reviewed this plan with Aspen School District to identify how the school bus stops would work in this area. One last thing on this slide. We also worked with MRA to ensure that they have adequate space for their vehicles and trailers, knowing they need easy in-and-out access. And then the last slide I'm going to talk to is this transportation and parking management. Not going to spend too long on this slide, but the public gave us their input on what they wanted the parking to look like. So the end result is about 50% subgrade parking and 50% surface parking. Every resident will have at least one covered spot, whether it be outside, in a carport, or underground. The parking, there's also a number of charging stations planned for EV vehicles. And then the parking is also broken down into phases. So as the buildings are phased, and also just long-term, the parking spaces for each building are as close to the building as possible, creating that ease as you go from Building 1 to 2 and 3. And then lastly, just, sorry, no problem. Just, we did create parking also critical by the building entrances for that loading and drop-off.
I would just add that the parking is essentially aligns up with the municipal code in that the quantity of parking is based on one parking space per one-bedroom unit and two parking spaces per each two- and three-bedroom unit. So in terms of the civil engineering design, there are numerous utility upgrades required to support the facilities that are planned. In the upper left-hand corner of the page, over in the ABC, we'll be connecting to the existing electric source as well as the sanitary sewer connections. So there are utilities that will be coming down the 200 Road in the AABC. And we will need to coordinate that work with Picken County. As you turn the corner and go into the lumberyard frontage road, there'll be utilities continuing under the roadway there. Our water main has to create a loop as part of the City of Aspen Water Department requirements. And so in the lower part of the screen, which is hard to see here, I guess, we've got utilities in the right-of-way, in the CDOT right-of-way that need to be abandoned. And there's also utilities at the underpass that we're going to need to identify the location of. And we have to do some rerouting of utilities through the site behind the Mountain Rescue building. So I think we mentioned last week that the city is currently planning on implementing the utility plan and putting in place a developable site that developers would then be solicited to come in and take the rest of the way in terms of vertical development. Stormwater drainage improvements on the site, I think we had some questions about this. We'll be making significant upgrades over what's existing.
Also important to note that we really tried to maximize the acoustics and with both the carports and the buildings for those communal spaces. We worked with waste management and environmental health to locate the trash pickup points for compost recycling, so that those worked well and are sized correctly. And we also reviewed this plan with Aspen School District to identify how the school bustups would work in this area. One last thing on this slide, we also worked with MRA to ensure that they have adequate space for their vehicles and trailers, knowing they need easy in-and-out access. And then the last slide I'm going to talk to is this transportation and parking management. I'm not going to spend too long on this slide, but the public gave us their input on what they wanted the parking to look like, so the end result is about 50% subgrade parking and 50% surface parking. Every resident will have at least one covered spot, whether it be outside, in a carport, or underground. The parking, there's also a number of charging stations planned for EV vehicles. And then the parking is also broken down into phases, so as the buildings are phased and also just long-term, the parking spaces for each building are as close to the building as possible, creating that ease as you go from Building One to Two and Three. And then lastly, just, no problem, just, we did create parking also critical by the building entrances for that loading and drop-off.
I would just add that the parking is essentially aligns up with the municipal code in that the quantity of parking is based on one parking space per one-bedroom unit and two parking spaces per each two- and three-bedroom unit. So in terms of the civil engineering design, there are numerous utility upgrades required to support the facilities that are planned. In the upper-left-hand corner of the page, over in the ABC, we'll be connecting to the existing electric source as well as the sanitary sewer connections. So there are utilities that will be coming down the 200 Road in the AABC, and we will need to coordinate that work with Picken County. As you turn the corner and go into the lumberyard frontage road, there'll be utilities continuing under the roadway there. Our water main has to create a loop as part of the City of Aspen Water Department requirements. And so in the lower part of the screen, which is hard to see here, I guess, we've got utilities in the right-of-way, in the CDOT right-of-way that need to be abandoned, and there's also utilities at the underpass that we're going to need to identify the location of, and we have to do some rerouting of utilities through the site behind the mountain rescue building. So I think we mentioned last week that the city is currently planning on implementing the utility plan and putting in place a developable site that developers would then be solicited to come in and take the rest of the way in terms of vertical development. Stormwater drainage improvements on the site, I think we had some questions about this. We'll be making significant upgrades over what's existing. If you currently look at the yellow triangle, point of concentration number one, there's actually, under the existing condition today, there's flooding that occurs from point of concentration one to the upper-left, point of concentration two. That area gets overloaded and some flooding occurs across the roadway toward the Ski.com building at times. We've been asked to pay close attention to this, and one of the things that we're doing is designing the stormwater infrastructure so that much less water in the future will go from point of concentration one to point of concentration two, thus reducing that flooding condition on the entire neighborhood. So there'll be improvements throughout the site where we capture runoff from a portion of the highway, in fact, deal with that onsite, and then the majority of the impervious area on the site then drains to the upper-left-hand part near the point of concentration number one. There'll be a stormwater pond there. So lots of different techniques. We've worked extensively with City of Aspen Engineering to make sure that we're making significant improvements on the stormwater management on the site.
All right, Randy?
Yeah, we've got a long list here of key features, and I'll just kind of highlight a few of them. Under community connection, the code-compliant parking is based on the number of units in the bedroom, so this is within what the city sees as necessary for parking, so we are not underparking the site. We are keeping parking as a priority, want to make sure that our parking doesn't become an issue for our adjacent neighbors. Convenient access to multimodal transportation. We talked about the bus route. We talked about the recycle. We talked about the connectivity to the trails, so that's all key components of this connected site. Under sustainability, Enterprise Green Community Certification provides a way for the community to really know how the results of this project will be able to look in the future and be able to be depended upon. Seventy-five percent net zero is an incredible stretch goal, and we see it as possible. Pedestrian-friendly design, we've right-sized the unit count with council's input, so that we've now allowed for better solar access around the whole site, the community spaces as well as the sidewalks, so thinking about what it's going to be to walk around this site all year long. We've looked at how the front porch characteristics of these ground-floor exterior access to the ground-floor units really helps create community, creates connectivity. Under living well, thinking about how these common spaces provide social connection spaces for the residents, that we've got storage as a high priority, not only in the units, but also thinking about where that storage needs to go, so having that located adjacent to where the cars are parked. All the things that, this helps with all the things that it takes to live well. And then being authentically Aspen by celebrating the color palette of Deer Hill, using natural materials, natural colors, so that this really blends in, and also celebrating those sustainable design strategies, things like the solar panels, that those are front-forward, that they really speak to and celebrate how we're really linking to nature on the site. As we think about the accessibility and think about how to create a neighborhood that's filled with equity and the ability to age in place, we're looking at 100% of these units that'll be connected to an accessible route. So every single unit here, you can get there if you've got some mobility issue. Every unit will be either designed to be accessible from the beginning or adaptable, so that as things, as people's lives change, as things come up, those units can be adapted so that folks with mobility issues can accommodate, be accommodated in their apartment. The building and site plan will incorporate principles of universal design, and I'll speak to that in just a second, and ultimately that those features are attractive and usable by the broadest range of people regardless of their age or ability. So we've got eight elevators in these three buildings. So the thinking about that is that if one of the elevators goes down, there's a backup elevator, so it's critical for people to get access up to those upper floors. We've got the code-compliant accessible routes in every level and every unit, including the indoor and underground covered parking spaces. We include all the required Type A accessible units. All units will be dimensionally compliant to be Type B, the adaptable that I just referred to, and accessible connections to pedestrian infrastructure like the sidewalks and trails to the ABC and along Highway 82. So we've got a list of 26 different potential universal design features here. Wanted to highlight a few of those, simple things like lever-handle hardware throughout the project. Just lever handles are easier for everyone to use instead of a round knob that you have to grasp. Thirty-six-foot, 36-inch-wide unit entry doors that have five-by-five clear spaces, so people have maneuvering space. Package shelves by every unit door, so folks could set their keys somewhere, put some groceries out of place so they could get in to their apartment. Minimum of 50% of the kitchen storage within reach range, so all of that is accessible and easy to get to. And blocking in all the adaptable bathrooms for easy installation of grab bars in the So the biggest issue again about this site plan is that as Christine and the rest of the team, we've looked at how to design the streets and the sidewalks so they're ultimately accessible. All the public spaces have accessible routes connecting them. All the entrances are on accessible routes, and they're accessible themselves. The handicap parking spaces all have easy access in close proximity to entrances. There's a handicap accessible parking spaces in each of the basement parking areas in each building. So accessibility has been thought about all the way through the project in every aspect of the project.
All right, so getting into the buildings and the unit plans themselves, they're based utilizing a module-based design, and the intent is that, looking forward to that efficiency, efficiency of building, efficiency for modifying the unit matrix if we needed to when it came time to develop. And what that means is we've got eight unique modules that can be reconfigured to create one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units. Now again, this doesn't necessarily mean this was how it will be implemented, but again, it is an eye towards efficiency, knowing that this type of approach may take up a little bit more space with that modular-based design, so it accommodates that, which means that as this were to be implemented, we do have that flexibility. Overall, the design is based to accommodate larger furniture throughout. We've got in-unit laundry. We've got bedroom size for king beds. We have in-unit storage as well. And as Randy said, it incorporates universal design principles. Our ground-floor units allow for entries off the corridors as well as entry off the exterior as well. So that connection to the outside is important with each unit. Again, if it's a patio on the ground floor. On the upper floors, it's a balcony, so that direct connection to nature and to the outdoors. The approach to materiality and sustainability is similar to the way we've approached other things, identifying those priorities, those elements that will be evaluated as this goes to be implemented, but also knowing we need that flexibility, given the kind of time that this could take to implement it. So how do we fine-tune those selections based on availability at time of construction? So this would be our roadmap. Again, looking for those durable, maintainable materials. But really, it's that context and compatibility, that tying it into Deer Hill and really taking inspiration from the surrounding site. So really looking to colors and textures, looking for that biophilic approach. We want this building to blend in with its surroundings to the greatest extent possible. We're also looking for those materials that are through-bodied, that are sort of true to what they are, so not looking for repainting, long-term maintenance, and really looking to that natural environment for that. And then getting to the aesthetic, that this building should feel rooted in place, that biophilic response to what you have around you and what you see every day, a nod to the history of the site, to the woods, to the lumberyard, and really also that thoughtful attitude towards our neighbors. We also want to make sure that we've got this sense of scale and that new spin on Mountain Modern, so that there is a lot of detail involved in this, a lot of texture, and a lot of scales over a variety of sizes. And so what that translates to is setbacks in our vertical articulation, so really being sensitive to those overall four floors, but really trying to push that ground floor in its setback from the plane of the floors two and three. That provides that protected patio space off that ground floor, and on the upper floor that translates to that setback that helps push that height back. But at the same time, it's celebrating the sustainable goals, those solar panels that are also doing double duty, providing shade as well as some level of protection for those upper balconies. Also, I think one of the things of utilizing these solar panels, as one of our architectural expressions, is the solar panels have to follow the sun. And so what we'll see as they move around the site, that relationship of those panels and how they angle to the floor below is going to change as the buildings move throughout the site, yet the solar panels remain oriented to the sun. We spent a lot of time looking at that softened ground plane of really working through that separation from the highly-public sidewalk, and then how you move through that rain garden up to your stoop and then ultimately into the privacy of your own unit. And that, creating that space also helps break down the overall scale of the building. Utilizing that technique of this brise soleil at the second and third floor, not only is it an articulation piece, it's also one of our passive strategies. So being able to fine-tune this design element as it moves across the building to address different solar considerations. So vertical, where it may turn horizontal, depending on that solar exposure, whether it's south or north-facing, east or west-facing. So getting into the overall floor plans, so this would be Building One, so the northernmost building. It would have the shared administrative spaces, so tenant and administrative offices would be in this corner here. It would serve both Building One and Building Two. It also offers the bulk of the community space, so a community room here, again, placed between Building One and Building Two, as well as a shared fitness area. Other common spaces include storage in the basement, as well as storage that would be located at each parking space to give residents access to storage where they may need it, closer to their vehicle, as well as that in-unit storage. And again, that development of those ground-floor patios that translate to those upper-level On this, Building Two, far fewer administrative spaces, obviously still cool things like mailrooms, package delivery, as well as some shared common spaces, but again, primarily the bulk of those program, that program is located in Building One. Still having the outside of unit storage, storage at each car space, and again, as Randy spoke to, the knuckles of each building have the elevator systems, and they're both paired up. But there's also celebrating that stair, so open stairs, again, at kind of the main circulation points of the building, as well as enclosed stairs throughout, so that there are many ways to access the buildings. Building Three, again, this is envisioned as that ultimately an ownership building, so this has more administrative space again, as well as those elevators, common spaces, in this case again, storage, common resident spaces on each floor, some exterior as well as interior spaces. And again, there's no difference in the types of units or the finishes or the way these buildings are approached between the rental units and Buildings One and Two, as well as our ownership and vision for Building Three. So the height of the building, this is a section of the way these buildings present themselves. The majority of the building is in this condition. It's a four-story building. Again, you can see the setback on Level One and the setback up on the fourth level. The connection to that ground plane is quite close. Most of the buildings, the bulk of it, is in this condition, where it's a couple steps up, a little bit of separation from the sidewalk, and this is what is generating the height of the building. Additionally, we've got the solar panels, and hopefully we saw that in some of the other views, that they don't necessarily present this way in this sort of section cut, but kind of begins to get towards that. But they float and they hover above the roof. It also does double duty, not only does it protect that fourth-floor balcony, it protects all of the mechanical equipment, the rooftop equipment, the heat pumps in order to achieve our sustainable goals, they're offered some additional level of protection by being underneath the solar panels. As Christine spoke to, we worked with the grades and siding to get our garage access as close to grade as possible, so we don't have very steep access into the garages, so that will be more maintainable in your winter months. But this is a few instances where we do have, the buildings appear slightly larger, but here's that view potentially from Annie Mitchell, where the buildings still effectively feel that they present as four-story buildings. And this indicates where that garage entry is, and there's two of them, we can see both for Building One and for Building Two. So I'm going to get into showing you a few perspectives of the project, and I won't get into necessarily exactly where they are, but we tried to take some key moments to begin to describe what the experience of this neighborhood will be like. And these are renderings that are not fully rendered with all of the materialities. I'm going to show you a little bit of both, but again, these are primarily to show that sense of mass and not the materialities. We'll get into that, so hang with me if you would. This is sort of like the old-fashioned chipboard models that we can see here, but here's that view a little bit bigger, taken as if you're on a balcony at Annie Mitchell, and you get that sense of what that space and distance in separation gives you. We can still see the mountains in the back. What we don't see is the airport or the lumberyard today, and that's the effect of that mass in this site, and there you can see those entries into those garages. This is a view of what it would be like standing next to the building. This is Building Two, this is the smallest of our communal spaces, and again, that effect of the softened ground plane, the articulation of floors two and three, and then that setback at the fourth floor, but still being able to achieve views throughout the site as well as that kind of buffer that the carports give us. This is that view from your private balcony from the fourth floor in Building One as you look south toward Deer Hill. And again, that experience of that communal space, here you can see that communal residence space as well as the open landscapes. So this is coming into the site, the view of Building Two from the entrance. Again, really playing towards that sense of articulation and having a lot of detail to capture the eye and bring down the scale, as well as the solar panels. And I wanted to show this one... And I wanted to show this one and follow it with its rendered version. So that you get that sense of when we add the materiality and the quality, that you get more of that fuller sense of, uh, of what this would be like. And again, this is really standing in building two and looking back towards that communal landscape, as well as that shared residence space of building one. So here, wanted to really begin to show what that, what we meant by softened ground plane and, and what the, the gap is for snow storage between the street. Which again, we add that, uh, softening separation, there's parking along this, so that sense of great separation between the pedestrians walking along the sidewalk. And vehicles moving on the street, separated by parked cars, as well as our snow storage, uh, gap with the detached sidewalk. And then moving through, again, an additional buffer that allows us to adjust grade, maintain our accessible sidewalks. And then further giving a separation and privacy into those, uh, individual units. And then this is looking towards building three, uh, from eighty-two. Uh, and again, some of that discussion around the carports and what that separation gives, uh, for that experience of walking along those, those neighborhood sidewalks.
So as part of our application, um, we have to propose how exactly to subdivide the property. Uh, and in doing so, it was an important strategy to match up the way we subdivide the property, uh, into parcels. So that it would match up with the phasing of the implementation. So this is just meant to show you, as we flick to the next slide, how the subdivision, the way we subdivide the parcels lines up with the phasing. And if you just click again, Laura, you can see that phase one lines up with the way we're subdividing the property. So that we can put, uh, each or, or all of these on a land lease, uh, individually or together. Uh, so that we can package them up for developers to perform that vertical development and clearly demarcate their areas of responsibility. And that would line up exactly with how we're subdividing the property. So it's part of the application process as a requirement, uh, just showing you the strategy involved there. We don't need to get into the whole phasing now, since you've already seen it. So wanted to mention, uh, a lot of folks who helped us with this project. You know, this project clearly wasn't conceived in a vacuum, there was a lot of community input, a lot of back and forth with council. But there have also been consultation with a great deal of, uh, staff from different city departments, folks with the county, folks with APCHA. Folks with numerous different, um, uh, organizations with whom we've worked. So we wanted to take a moment to thank everybody who helped us along the way. And we also wanted to let council know that it's not just the folks at this table who have been involved in the design of this project. So we wanted to also take a minute to talk about what the approval of this plan development means. And then also what the approval of this plan development doesn't mean. We know that the, the approval of this plan development, um, provides a legal framework for the development to occur. It puts in place development rights, it goes ahead and provides entitlements. But what it doesn't do is it doesn't authorize the staff to go ahead and construct this. It doesn't authorize a specific financing structure, a specific financing plan, it doesn't authorize any city budgets, it doesn't finalize an income mix. City council has numerous different ways to provide a go or no-go on this project. Again, putting in place the plan development, um, you know, doesn't authorize a detailed financial plan. Nor does it authorize city budgets. There's an annual, uh, city budget process that we go through every year and the city council will be asked usually in October to approve next year's budget and so on. So through the, you know, consent, uh, calendar, the city council has the ability to say yes or no to contracts as we move forward towards implementation. So there are lots of different ways that council has to control, um, over, over go or no-go and over, uh, future city council work sessions as well. We can and should, um, at this table, talk about detailed financial plans, options related to that phasing and implementation. Solicitations to private developers for vertical implementation of the project. The plan development process, as Kevin will further outline, uh, has stricter guardrails in terms of the review criteria, and I'll leave it at that. Unless Sarah, you had anything you wanted to speak to about that? Otherwise, we wanted to thank you for your time and, uh, hand it back over.
Thanks. We have another staff presentation coming up for a little bit. At this time, council members, if you have specific questions about the presentation that you've seen at this point. Sure.
Thanks all for your hard work on this. Uh, could you pull up the section drawings showing building height? Please. Thanks. Want to make sure I'm understanding this right. I believe city of Aspen land use code requires you to measure height from either proposed finished grade or existing grade, whichever is more restrictive. Here you're taking it from the finished floor of the first floor of the building. Is that accurate, the way that you're reflecting that?
Yes, although I'm going to have Nicole help me out a little.
Hi.
My microphone, sorry.
Yes, although I'm going to have Nicole help me out a little bit on this.
Right, hi. Thanks, yeah, you're exactly correct. City code does prescribe a certain way to measure building height. That was one of the things that we talked about with city staff was, at this point in the design, we have a basic grading idea, a basic grading plan. How do we provide enough flexibility in our PD application to allow for, uh, the building to be designed in the way that we need to? But also accommodate some variations in, in, in the finished grade or existing grade, whichever is higher. And when we talked about that with city staff, it was recommended and, well, we recommended and we sort of, uh, got to an agreement. That what we should propose in our PD application should be what we would like to see and what we would need in order to move forward with the design. And what we need to move forward with the design is to, uh, break down the building height in a number of different ways. So we have analyzed both the, uh, what we think the finished grade will look like, and that's included in our PD application. But we've also taken, um, the idea of building height and from the finished floor to the top of the parapet, what that building height measurement will be. And we've also measured what the, uh, ultimate building height, if you include the projections for the, um, uh, roof projections to cover the mechanical equipment and for the solar panels. So all of those, um, all of those height calculations are included in our application.
Thanks.
So in terms of code compliance, Kevin's going to talk about height in his presentation. Because the PD process allows some flexibility in how to deal with height, and you've got that captured in your presentation, right?
Thanks, could, could you explain why you chose to represent it this way as opposed to the standards of our community?
What, what do you mean, like why?
You chose a subjective method of measuring height.
No, we, we chose a, we chose a method of measuring height using all of those methods. We included the, in our PD application, we included.
I meant, I meant specifically in this presentation, I should have.
Oh, in this slide? You know, we actually had another slide. And we took it out at the last minute because we thought it was getting into too much detail and we knew that the, that the council wanted to go fast. And so we actually decided literally before, just this afternoon, to take it out. So it was a, it was a last minute decision to only focus on this slide in order to emphasize speed.
Let, let, let me just mention it's. But we do go ahead and describe the height of the buildings from finished grade and also including the grade of the garage access, which is where it's the highest. So the PD process, as outlined in the municipal code, provides this level of flexibility. We consulted with staff from the community development department and the community development department provided us with the advice to show it as it is. And then the community development department will then evaluate its code compliance from there.
Right, because essentially what the PD does is it says, okay, you, this doesn't conform to the existing code, right? That's what the whole PD process is about. So because it doesn't conform to the existing code, show us what you need. And so that's exactly what we've done in our application. And our application does include other images beyond just the one that we showed you this afternoon. So it, there, it, you know, there is definitely an effort to make sure that we're being thorough and clear. Because the PD application is going to be used in the future. It's, it has to be clear enough to, so that code compliance and the zoning staff can actually look at building, uh, plans and site plans at the point of, um, building permit. And say, yep, what they're proposing matches with what their PD application says.
And that's common for the plan development process here in Aspen.
Thanks, just feels a little misleading as part of the presentation because there's a couple of feet of height that is omitted from these numbers. Versus the standard of by which height is measured in this community. Thanks.
Where are the numbers missing?
So that, there, if you look at the one where it shows where it's kind of lines up with the top of a vehicle's tires in the, in the other slide. They're not measuring it from the finished grade, they're measuring it from the, the finished floor of the first floor of the units. Which is not a way that we measure height in this community.
It's the bottom of the garage.
Well, in, it, in different places in the building, it would be different, but the bottom of the vehicular ramp going in, the bottom of the, uh, adjacent driveways and, and rain guard, what they were calling the rain garden. There's a variety of different measurement points, none of which are reflected in this. This is some new standard that they've invented for this slide.
But just to.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, one second. You know, Bill, I mean. You, you, you say it was such, um, uh, uh, desire to, to prove that, that they're like doing, they're not trying to pull the wool over your eyes or anything. They're not making it up as they go along, they're explaining it to you right now. This one slide for this presentation is not what the building is built on or to stand, or to codes. Kevin is here for us on, on, on staff behalf to, to deal with that. That is not the intention here. I mean, I, I get your point, but the way that you're expressing it is, um, is, is really damning. And I, I just, I, I just, I don't think that's the conversation that we're having here at the table.
Okay, I, I, it just does not feel, um, it feels a little contrived to me and not honest. And, uh, it's not the standard by which things are done in Aspen, so I'm quite surprised to have seen that.
If there's a dimension here that's omitted or unclear, please point it out. It appears that the string dimension vertically from the bottom to the top describes every level.
Uh, uh, again, there, there is not a string dimension from the bottom of the vehicular ramp going all the way up to the top of the building, which is one of the ways height would be measured, right?
It's showing the finished floor of the garage. We'll get to it.
I, I think I've made my point clear. Thank you very much, and I appreciate you answering the questions.
Sure. Other questions at this time?
I have one quick question for you. On the environmental side, you, uh, denote a seventy-five percent net zero, but it seems like the conversation is really around the electricity usage of the project. Is that what you're talking about when you talk about energy net zero? And if that's the case, is there opportunity in the future for closing that gap of twenty-five percent?
So there's no other source of energy on the site besides, you know, electricity. So we're not bringing in gas or, or anything, it's a hundred percent electric. So the electricity offset that Randy cited is seventy-five percent. There could be the opportunity to somehow raise that, um, by putting solar panels on more available surfaces such as the carports. We stopped short of doing that, um, so that we didn't have just an excess. It could be explored. I, I, one of the things that comes up, you know, in terms particularly of like the electric vehicle charging. Christine mentioned, um, that, but also we'd be aiming for fifteen percent of the parking spaces to be, um, for electric vehicle charging. But the question often comes up is like, how do you later increase that? And it's about capacity, the capacity of the transformers. It's, it's less, so there is like infrastructure at each parking space, but there's also capacity at the transformers that's important. And so as, if we're allowed to move forward with this project, we would do further detailed engineering. That would allow us to figure out how to sort of optimize our ability to upsize some of the transformers to potentially handle more EV charging in the future. And then we could also do more engineering related to potentially handling more, uh, PV charging of batteries. And then the, uh, smoothing out of that curve as it goes back to the grid. So we would need to be able to move forward with this plan development so that we could do that further engineering. But some of those questions start to relate to the electrical capacity.
All right.
Do you have questions, is it for now or?
Depends, if it's on the material that was just presented, I'd say go for it now.
On the material. One quick question is, in the phase, I saw that childcare was last, is that correct?
So this plan development application does not propose a childcare facility. It only proposes to set aside about a half acre of property to be potentially used as a future, uh, early childhood education center that could be, uh, further developed, uh, later.
Right, and it would be through an amendment process, correct?
Yeah, it would be very similar to the ECE process that council has looked at for Burlingame.
Got it. And I guess this was from the other night, but this goes to all the questions we have, the financing of this project. And the question I had financing wise was, you know, whether we can pay for it and also pay for expiring deed restrictions and the fourteen other things we have in our affordable housing agenda.
I'd like to respond to that, Mr. Mayor.
I'd prefer that you let them know what our plans are for, for maybe addressing some of those financing questions that are going to come up today.
My recommendation has been to the council members that you have a work session to discuss criteria that you would, that do not qualify underneath the land use code. As was shared earlier, the PD process is about entitlements, not about project financing. And so staff is more than happy to have those conversations, but to, to intermingle it with the entitlements would be inconsistent in how any other applicant is treated or what the code is written. The land use code does not differentiate whether the city is the applicant, whether Picken County is the applicant, or whether it's a private developer and how the applicant needs to be treated.
Completely understood, I'm still glad I asked, especially because, um, it's good to just like know that process. And it was in the slides as far as financing, so that's why I thought it was a fair question, thank you.
So we will.
I need direction though about whether there will be a work session, I have not received direction from three of you willing to do that route to answer those questions.
We will be getting to that in this meeting.
So hold off on that. Um, other design features, um, I spoke with Edward Olmons, who's in this room right now, about a lot of designs he had. And I'm just curious if things were considered, such as a green berm along highway eighty-two to sort of block vision, noise, and, um. Make it more aesthetically pleasing to almost not even see the buildings from the highway. Was that a consideration?
It was and it is actually in the project. We're doing that in two ways, um, in front of, uh, building three. In between building three and highway eighty-two, there's a carport structure that will do that. So there's, uh, not enough room for the carport, um, and a berm. And so the carport will essentially have its back towards the highway, blocking that noise at the lower level. Uh, and serving the same function that a berm would in that area. As you move from right to left, if you were standing on the highway looking at the project, you'd then see the mountain rescue building. And then to the left of that, you would see the driveway entrance. There is some berming along there today, and where there is space, we will continue that berm. But as you continue to move to the left of the project. continue that berm. But as you continue to move to the left of the project, we run out of space, because the CDOT right-of-way constrains us in between the frontage road and the highway, so you see trees instead. So, we sort of transition from carports, if you go in from right to left, if you're looking at the project from the highway, we transition from carports, then you see the mountain rescue facility, then you see some berming along the way, then you see more and more trees performing that buffering.
Okay. So, it does exist in some capacity, but the, the carports is, I'm not, are carports adequate when it comes to what a green berm would do, or?
I would say we're not only using a berm strategy, but we're using other strategies as well.
Okay. Because I've been told that some of the units that might be facing the highway might sound like echo chambers, and it might be extremely loud if you're facing the highway. Is that something you might be able to speak to as you-
Yeah. I have a great experience about the project that we implemented at 802 West Main Street, which is right near the Hickory House. We had similar questions come up about the balconies right outside the entrance to Aspen, right there, at the curve at the end of Main Street. And it's, it's great, because the folks that live there now, when they open their balcony door, and they sort of stand above where the cars go by, you can hear the cars, it's pretty loud. And as soon as you close off that door, because of the robust building envelope and the triple pane glass type windows and appurtenances that we typically have to use here because of our climate zone anyway, and because we'll be looking for a more robust building envelope here because of our sustainability certification, when you close that balcony door, it essentially closes off a great deal of that noise, almost in its entirety. But when you open that door and you become part of that space outside, you take on more of that outside environment.
Okay. So, basically, if you want to use the deck, you might have to put up with noise coming from the highway. I mean, that's just the reality of like living next to a highway, but the, is there, like the green berms and anything else in the design that was thought of that still just might be one hazard of this project?
Unless you're on the other side of the building, where it will be significantly quieter.
Okay. And then, I guess last for this little section is on transportation, and I was wondering if you could speak to again, an underpass or overpass possibility instead of the stoplight where it currently is. And I think that comes from a 2012 CDOT study? Is that right?
Yeah, and that process was initiated by Picken County with CDOT. So, the extent to which they studied alternatives is sort of outside the purview of this affordable housing development. We're dealing with the access control plan that was put in place by CDOT, Picken County, and also adopted by the City of Aspen, which is also referenced in the Aspen Area Community Plan, and which, you know, there's also not room for ramps on our side of the highway. If you think about where our under, our trail underpass goes underneath our driveway, we barely have enough room to get our underpass in, in, like between the Highway 82 right-of-way and the mountain rescue property. We're already narrowing that up to the extent we possibly can, so that we don't have to encroach on the mountain rescue property. There's no room for ramps and other vehicular type of access. And then, on the other side of the highway, the west side, is the airport. We don't own any of that property for any ramps of any kind. And also, CDOT is hot to understand exactly what the airport's plan is going to be on the west side of the highway, but we have no control over that either. So, while there could be alternatives that many people could come up with, there's simply no physical space for ramps related to vehicular underpass in that area. We've also heard the same question about a potential roundabout in this area, and CDOT has told us that the traffic volumes do not warrant a roundabout in this area either. So, whether or not those were looked at as part of that Picken County effort in 2012, I don't know. But, our analysis has shown that there's just no physical space for any of those alternatives.
There's no physical space for an overpass or an underpass?
Correct.
Okay. And has there been a connection with the airport and the county commissioners about a potentially new terminal there, and what that would mean for it?
I am your liaison for that. And currently, the airport is also following the state highway control access plan and anticipates that there'll be a traffic light at this location. The airport layout plan that has to be submitted to the FAA has been in draft form and hasn't finalized whether there will be ingress or egress or both at this new traffic light in conjunction with the airport access.
More of a comment than a question, but something maybe you can address. I, I just, I don't see how 435 parking spaces, a bus that comes every half hour, and a new stoplight is good for the traffic mobility of the City of Aspen when transportation mobility were the number one thing on our priority list in our resolution that we did at the council retreat. And-
Just, Mr. Mayor, may I speak on a procedural note?
Sure.
So, just to clarify for these public hearings, this is a place for clarifying the applicant's presentation. I would really encourage members of council to reserve their opinions about whether something works or doesn't work until after you've had the opportunity to hear from the community and completed that public hearing and you enter into discussion together. Certainly, if you need to articulate more to ask questions of this application, please do. I just want to assure that you don't appear as prejudging an application prior to the public hearing being concluded. Thanks.
May I clarify? Just in terms of clarifying what is proposed, there's also a dedicated bus route that's proposed that would operate 365 days a year, every 30 minutes. And, we've heard extensively from folks in our community outreach that there would be significant uptake by folks to use that bus.
Yeah, I got one more question afterwards. Just one more.
Thanks. Thanks, Sam Montori. Could you talk a little bit, Chris, about why the existing bus stops were insufficient and why it was decided to occupy the space on the site with a new bus station and reroute the, the buses through the project?
Yeah, no problem. Because of the trip generation that was calculated in our transportation impact analysis, the development is required to provide mitigation that offsets those trips. So, one way or another, we were faced with a need to offset the trip generation. So, the, the dedicated bus route that's proposed does that. Secondly, we've heard from people over and over in the community that the up-valley buses during the morning peak hour, if you try to get on at the up-valley ABC stop, are packed with standing room only. And so, even if you can get on one, sometimes they have to, sometimes they go right by you, in front of you, and you have to wait for the next one. So, when we were dealing with that, we tried to figure out what would be the best route here. We worked with city transportation folks, people in city engineering as well, to come up with a couple of variations on what could be a dedicated bus route that would help us mitigate the trips generated in our transportation impact analysis. So, not only did the City of, City of Aspen transportation folks weigh in on what they thought would be the best route, but also, during our community outreach, we also did some survey questions, showing people different bus routes. And, and it wasn't huge numbers of people, but we did generally get people who agreed with the same route that the City of Aspen transportation folks agreed with. And that was that, on this image, the bus would go in the down-valley direction, from right to left on Highway 82, go past the development, turn right at the existing ABC traffic light, turn right again, and come down the frontage road, and come along that way and pick up at this bus station that you're pointing out, that is a new bus station. And then, people, the bus would come out of the driveway and turn left. One of the great benefits that that brings to the, to the ABC is that there's a stop at the existing Baltic stop that folks could even take from the airport. In the event that you're coming in in the airport, and you need quick transportation, you could take the underpass, pedestrian underpass, and hop on this 30-minute service bus and head quickly back into town without waiting for an up-valley bus on Highway 82. So, there's quite a bit of flexibility built into the route.
Thanks.
No other item?
No.
I know? Okay. We'll be back to it. All right, thanks. So, we can move forward with our presentations?
All right. Good afternoon. I'm Kevin Reyes, planner with Community Development. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen.
Please.
All right. So, I spoke a few minutes before Chris spoke, and his team gave their presentation, and it just mentioned, I'll just reiterate, obviously, their team covered quite a bit about, you know, where we've been and the public engagement process, and the years of council work sessions we've had, and the opportunities to weigh in on what kind of project we want to have here. All of that's informed the design that is before us this evening. So, my role here as community development planner is to assess the project based on the review criteria prescribed pursuant to the land use code, Title 26 of the land use code. So, that's my role. So, I'm going to go over the project and, and really relate it to the reviews listed on the screen here. And I encourage council, as you, you know, think about the discussion, you, you frame your discussion really around the review criteria, because that is sort of the legal framework for which a decision can be made. So, jumping into it here, the, the reviews that are triggered as part of this application are major public project, amendments to official zone district maps, plan development, project review, and detailed review, major subdivision, transportation and parking, and growth management quota system. So, again, I'll go ahead and, and dive, delve into each of these individually and, and kind of pick them apart. And, just so everyone can prepare themselves, this will be about a 45-minute presentation, so it won't, it won't be too, too long. So, quick background, some of this might be a little redundant, but site location, many, so it's four parcels, all of them are owned by the City of Aspen. The first is the mini storage facility, next two are the lumberyard facilities, and then, the last one is Lot 1D, which is an undeveloped parcel. This was subdivided by city council last fall. We have council members on this, on this body this evening that were part of that subdivision process. And the three developed parcels, lumberyard and mini storage facility, are both located in the service commercial industrial zone district. And Lot 1D is located in the rural residential and conservation zone district. So, the proposed development, as we've seen, it's consisting of four buildings. First is Building 1, Building 2, and then, Building 3. The chart here is, is just a quick breakdown of, of the units. This is included in the memo as well, but total of 277 dwelling units are proposed, a combination of 1, 2, and 3 bedroom units. The applicant, the applicant is requesting 10 years of vested rights to build out this project. And the, the vesting is contemplated in, in five phases. So, the first phase is, is Phase Zero, which is really demolition of existing improvements, recycling of materials that might, might be appropriate for reuse, and building out basic infrastructure improvements. Things like building in the, the street network, dry utilities, water and sewer. All of those are contemplated in, in Phase Zero, as well as redesigning and realigning the existing intersection on Highway 82, just in front of the mountain rescue Aspen. That's also contemplated as, as part of this phase as well. And then, jumping into Phase 1, you can see this is contemplated in 2026 to 2027. And then, Building, Phase 2 is Building 2, 20, 2028 to 2029. And then, Phase 3 is 2030 to 2031. Just to point out, you know, right now, we're in 2023. If council decides to approve this project, you'll notice that, that 2031, that final year, is, is eight years out instead of 10. So, there's a little bit of buffer room, sort of anticipated in there. And the applicant also is requesting the ability to, you know, develop these buildings concurrently if resources allow. So, there's nothing that would require them to do this over 10 years. If resources allow, if there's, you know, federal grants or whatever that become available, then, then they can, you know, proceed at a faster pace. So, here's a, a quick rendering of, of what's proposed as viewed from the highway. Just highlighting the solar panels, says that's a pretty prominent feature. You'll see they're on the, on the roofs of all the buildings. And then, the solar panels down low here are on the roofs of the carports proposed for the on-street parking. Again, with the goal of producing 75% of the energy used from, from these solar panels. So, jumping into the reviews here, the first is major public review. So, what does this, what does this review mean? So, the purpose, according to the code, is basically, it provides an alternative review process to provide a more flexible, streamlined, and thorough, and coordinated review of public projects when it's determined by council to be in the best interest of the community to do so. So, that's the purpose of this review. In order to be considered a major public project, it must support stated community goals. So, I have listed all of the goals that are, that we believe are, are met as part of this project in Exhibit A dot 1 of the packet. But for my presentation, I'm going to just briefly highlight one of the goals that I think really stands out, that I think is worth mentioning here. So, the Aspen Area Community Plan highlights sort of how we want to develop in the future. And there's a section in that plan, which is called the West of Castle Creek Corridor. And in that section, there's a, there's a paragraph that says, "The, the area," referring to the ABC, "continues to provide a somewhat less expensive alternative to land prices in Aspen, which has resulted in the purchase of lands for and the development of affordable housing in close proximity to Aspen." So, the first thing to just think about here is, the location of this housing is, is consistent with this statement prescribed in the Aspen Area Community Plan. And it's worth really seeing sort of the, oh, the last thing I want to point out here before I move, the ACP also mentions that the area should feature separate and recognizable nodes of unique uses and functions. So, that, focus on that word, nodes. And so, when you look at just an aerial map of the land uses in the area, this is not showing zoning, but this is just showing current land uses. You'll see, here we have open space, kind of a rough outline of the open space as existing. The airport is on the left of Highway 82 there. Those are some industrial-based uses as part of the, the ABC. These blue areas represent multifamily residential existing developments. So, this, let's see if my mouse goes here. There you go. So, this area right here where my mouse is, that's the Annie Mitchell Housing Development. And then, this bigger blue area is Burlingame. And the subject site is, is highlighted in orange, so it's contiguous with the Annie Mitchell Housing Development, which we believe is only going to, you know, further, you know, define the, the existing node in this area. There's still open space between the site and Burlingame. There are still industrial-based uses that are going to be occurring in the, in the ABC. We're simply defining this, this existing node with, with additional housing. And it's worth pointing out, just the, the timeline and the history of, of the pieces that have come together to get to where we are tonight. And just looking back in time, as far as supporting stated community goals, what's interesting is, you can, you can trace this project all the way back to the mid 90s. The undeveloped site, Lot 1D, that was subdivided by council last fall, was acquired in 1997. And at that time, the land was located in the county, and state statute requires that when land is annexed into the city, an initial zoning needs to be established, and you, you generally cannot create any non-conforming uses. So, when the land was annexed in the city back in, in 97, council was tasked with trying to figure out what the zoning was going to be. And during that time, so this is, this little space, this little triangle here is, is the piece I'm talking about. During that time, there was a memo that was presented to council that proposed some possible zoning for that area. And it's, it's a little bit hard to read on the screen here, but what that says is, one potential zoning for that area is residential multifamily. And if you look at the, the meeting minutes and the memo and the discussion that evening, there was discussion about building affordable housing in this site. It was acknowledged back in 1997. Council ultimately adopted the rural residential and conservation zone districts, because there were, additional time was needed in order to acquire the other two parcels, so they just wanted to sort of, you know, freeze existing conditions and allow it to remain as open space. But again, it was always acknowledged that this would be developed at some point in the future. But again, it was always acknowledged that this would be developed at some point in the future. And this was, again, the Lot 1D that was subdivided. This is the, the plat that shows that from, from the fall. Looking at the lumberyard site, this was purchased in two thousand and seven. So over a decade ago, purchased in two thousand and seven, again, with the goal of developing affordable housing at some point in the future. But again, it was acknowledged, you know, the last piece of the puzzle was, was trying to get this mini storage site. And when that became available, the city jumped on the opportunity and purchased that in, in twenty twenty. So you think about the number of city councils that have sat before this property and interviewed it and decided that this is something they want to do. The commonality of this goal has remained consistent for over two decades. So as far as supporting stated community goals, staff finds this criterion to be met. So jumping into the next review, we're looking at rezoning. So I mentioned previously, the existing lumberyard and mini storage facility are located in the service, commercial, industrial zone districts, or SCI. The mini storage facility has a PD overlay. And then the undeveloped site is in the conservation and rural residential zone district. And the application before us this evening is to take all three parcels and, and rezone them to residential multifamily with a PD overlay. So when it comes to rezoning something, it's important to really consider the context of the site to make sure that what you're rezoning is, is compatible with surrounding land uses and, and the neighborhood context. In this situation, we have a property that's located adjacent to an industrial area. It's located on the side of the highway, and it's across the street from an airport. So there are a lot of factors there that really needed to be considered in order to determine if this was an appropriate place for housing. So several assessments were done, one of which was a site assessment from the consultant Kumar and Associates. They submitted a hazard statement just to see if the site is suitable for this kind of development. And so they looked at things like natural or man-made hazards, and they found that those were not a concern. Things like mine waste and related contaminants were, there was not a significant amount of that, and that that was not a concern. Flooding, this is located at the base of Deer Hill, but the slopes of the, of, and the contours of that area is, is not present as a concern for flooding. Mud flow, debris flow, fault ruptures, rock in soil creep, rock falls and rock slides. All of these things were checked off the list from this, from this consultant as, as non-issues. So that kind of checked the box to make sure that the site was compatible for, for housing development. And of course avalanche and snow slides. As far as the impacts of the airport and, and the highway, you know, you, you don't want to house people in a place that's going to be extremely loud. So a noise study was conducted, and it was based on the best practices prescribed by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, as, as most people know it. And according to HUD, it's inappropriate to house people in a location that is exposed to a day-night average or DNL of sixty-five decibels or above. DNL is just a way of expressing decibel noise as an average. So it might not be a car driving by that is, is extremely loud, that, you know, that's not going to be captured in the, in the DNL. It's more of a, of a, of a consistent average over an extended period of time. So what they found here, you can see the DNL of sixty-five is indicated by that red line. And the subject property is located outside of that DNL of sixty-five. So it's located out of that area that's considered too loud pursuant to HUD standards. The other thing I want to point out, because of this, you know, there, there will still be noise on this, on the site. And Chris mentioned the, the berms that are contemplated along the, the frontage of this, along with the, the trees that will help kind of mitigate the initial noise coming towards this thing. But the, there's the general site plan, part of the reason it's, it's oriented in this manner is you can see the, the convex side of each building is facing out towards the highway and towards the airport, which will have the ability to, to reflect the noise away from the site. And each of the outdoor areas are kind of hugged within the buildings. So anyone who's out there enjoying the open space, it'll be much quieter as opposed to if that was located between the building and the street. So this, the site design was informed partially as part of the noise study. The other study I want to point out is the air quality study. What's interesting is the carcinogen benzene was detected one day during the air quality study, representing a two-point-two-in-one-million maximum cancer risk, which is a measurement, I believe, from the CDC that, you know, how to, how to measure the impacts of carcinogens. But what's interesting is a higher concentration of benzene was detected at the control testing site, which was located in Pepke Park. So what staff takes away from this, and I think the applicant does as well, is the, the read of benzene at the site was, was not something that was of concern, and it was, it was not elevated to a level that would pose any sort of substantial risk, especially because the control area in, in town tested at a higher rate. So jumping back to the criterion here, making sure that this is compatible with surrounding zone districts, land uses, considering existing land use and neighborhood characteristics, staff finds this criterion to be met. Next criterion I want to point out here is major subdivision. So pursuant to Title 26 of the code, subdivision is the division or aggregation of land for the purpose of creating individual lots or parcels. And those shall be approved with conditions or denied according to the following standards. The first is providing an efficient pattern of development that optimizes the use of the limited amount of land available for development. So looking at how this is, is laid out, I want to, I just want to point out how we've analyzed this. So here we have the, the road network that is providing circulation throughout the site. I'll point out the, the street network here is providing vehicular access not only for residents, but also for maintenance vehicles, snow removal, emergency access. All of that is accommodated with the street network. And the, the total of ten parcels are, are proposed to accommodate the development. So first one is Parcel 1A. It's pretty straightforward. That's where Building 1 is, is proposed. Parcel 1B and Parcel 1C are ancillary to Parcel 1A. Those are going to provide additional on-street parking and some landscape improvements to sort of soften up the area, as well as Parcel 1D on the bottom there. Parcel 2A is the same deal. This is the location for Building 2. And Parcel 2B is ancillary to that parcel, providing additional on-street parking. And then Parcel 3A is where Building 3 is proposed. And you'll see, this is a, a much larger parcel than those other Parcel 1A and Parcel 2A. And that was purposely done because at some point, this building, as, as Chris and his team mentioned, will be condominiumized, and, and the units will be sold off. So the HOA that will be formed at that time will be taking on the maintenance of, of that parcel. Parcel 5 and Parcel 6, these are set aside specifically for stormwater management and, and water detention. And then Parcel 4 is set aside, this is where the childcare center is, is contemplated. I do want to point out, we don't have any sort of plans or designs for this childcare center, which is fine. It, it keeps the Parcel 4 flexible for future use. So what we've done here, you know, council has indicated that they, they want to have a childcare center there at some point in the future. But instead of memorializing that and approving it tonight, what we have done is, if you look in your, in the ordinance, the, the third whereas, we just included a statement that just mentions that a childcare center is, is contemplated on Parcel 4, but we don't approve it in any way. And the reason we did that was to just provide like some breadcrumbs, so to speak, for, you know, whoever's sitting in these chairs twenty years from now, deciding what they want to put there. They could see, oh, a childcare center was, was, was thought of. Community, you know, sentiment has changed, and we want to put something else there. That, that's totally fine. Whatever goes there, a new application's going to need to come forward requesting a PD amendment. But we, we did include just a, a little bit of a breadcrumb in the ordinance to, to carry that forward. I just thought I'd point that out. So here are all the parcels proposed, again, ten parcels. Again, looking at the proposed pattern of development, optimizing use of a limited amount of land that's available. Now, with everything I just said, you know, mitigating for, you know, stormwater runoff, improving the existing condition, which I'll show in, in a minute, providing two hundred and seventy-seven affordable housing units, and providing fully parked development. All of these things were taken into consideration, and we believe a lot of goals have been, a lot of, of the sort of checkboxes, so to speak, have been checked to provide a place that provides high standard of living and really is a place that is an efficient development pattern that optimizes the use of this limited resource that the city owns. So we find, we find this criterion to be met. Next criterion I want to point out, again, is, is on the topic of stormwater runoff. And this just speaks to meeting engineering standards as part of the City of Aspen Urban Runoff Management Plan. Excuse me. So I just want to point out, not only is this standard met, it's, it's exceeded. The applicant's gone above and beyond to exceed this standard. And just pointing out what is there right now, you can see, these are photos of the lumberyard. And just want to show these on here to show the amount of impervious surface that's existing on the site. We received a couple of public comments included in the packet that were concerned about future stormwater impacts of the new development. And I want to show that we're, the applicant is, is improving the existing condition. Here's another photo of the mini storage facility. Again, a ton of impervious surface. There's not a lot of place for the water to run to. And just seeing this site plan, you can see, I've, you know, briefly highlighted some of the main open space areas that are going to be removing that impervious surface and providing that space for water to run. Building, the, the footprint of where Building 1 and Building 2 are contemplated are parcels that are already developed. So we're going to redevelop those parcels, but in, in addition, we're going to provide additional open space compared to what's there now. Building 3, again, that's on an open space, and that's going to be sort of a, sort of greenfield development, so to speak. But significant open space is provided there. And again, the applicant has done the analysis with the engineering team to ensure that the City of Aspen Urban Runoff Management Plan is, is, is met. So we find this criterion to be met. Last criterion I want to point out for major subdivision is preserving important geological features, mature vegetation, and structures or features of the site that have historic, cultural, visual, or ecological importance or contribute to the identity of town. So I think it's worth noting, I can show these photos again just to get a sense of what's going on here, but the, as far as preserving geological features, there's not a lot of geological features of great significance, community importance on the site. You can see from these photos, this is a highly industrial area. So, you know, there, there's not a lot of things that are going to be preserved. The other thing is, this is a relatively flat site. You can see there are some grade changes, but the amount of grading that's going to be needed to accommodate this development is, is quite minimal. And the applicant has designed these buildings to sort of work with some of the, the grade changes on the site as well. So, sorry to jump around, but I, I just thought it'd be worth showing those photos again. There are no historic or cultural or visual features on this site. So we find this criterion to be met. Before I move on, I want to mention the, the last thing here is worth looking at the site plan again. On the, on the topic of, of grading, the last thing I want to point out is the, the green space located between Buildings 2 and 3, that provides not only a space for people to recreate, but it also provides a buffer between Deer Hill and the development. And so what that means is as Deer Hill comes, slopes down towards these buildings, there's a, there's a bit of a buffer there that, again, by putting green space reduces the amount of grading that needs to occur. Instead of putting these buildings right at the base of Deer Hill, these areas have, have been purposely put in this location to help minimize that, those impacts. So again, we find this criterion to be met. As far as general subdivision review standards are, are concerned, providing guaranteed access to a public way, this is pretty straightforward. You want to make sure all the parcels have legal access, legal and vehicular access. All of these parcels have that. And again, as I mentioned, the, the amount of space needed for vehicle, larger vehicles to make turns on this, on this property is met. We, we even had the applicant team model the fire truck that the Aspen Fire District uses to make sure that it can make the turns on these streets. So all of that has been taken into consideration. Okay, jumping into the plan development, project review, and detailed review. So we talked about this a little bit with the applicant team, but again, the reason for plan development is to memorialize details upfront, such as height, bulk, mass, density, parking, landscaping. And all of these are going to help clarify what is, is approved moving forward. It's worth, it's worth noting, excuse me, in a, in a normal application, when, when a plan development comes to review, comes before council in a normal application, generally it has to be submitted in two separate pieces. The first piece is project review, and that generally goes to city council, or that generally goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a recommendation. And then it goes to city council for final approval. And then an applicant has to come back with a new application, and they have to submit for de, for detailed review. And that has to go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a recommendation. So that's, that's sort of the normal process, but it's, since we're doing this as a major public project, we have included both project review and detailed review in the same review. And as I, as I showed previously, the reason we're doing that is because we're meeting these community goals. But one of the benefits of it is that all the details, not only related to height, bulk, mass, and density, are, are discussed, but also details like materials and landscaping and lighting, which are generally captured in detailed review. All of those are put in the same application for council's benefit and for the benefit of the public. So they're all sort of put out there at once, so everyone can see it as one package, instead of a, sort of a piecemeal process that goes to P and Z, and then council, and then back to P and Z. So we believe this process actually improves sort of the ability for the public to understand what is being proposed. So I, I just wanted to provide that background and just jump into what each review sort of does. So project review establishes the allowed dimensions of a property to ensure site planning is compatible with the context of the area. So you look at bulk, mass, height, site layout, parking. And detailed review is intended to perfect and finalize detailed aspects of the project that were not, you know, established during project review. So things like landscaping, materials, and lighting. So again, we're going to combine these two reviews into one. So I'll just spend most of my analysis here on project review, because that's the bulk of, of what we're talking about. So again, this is talking about dimensions, height, bulk, mass, density. Um, so again, this is talking about dimensions, height, bulk, mass, density. And one of the, the criteria that's, uh, discussed in the code is if, if there are any sort of variations requested by a PD, applicant submitting for a PD, uh, two of these criterion, uh, need to be met. The first is there exists a significant goal to be achieved through such variations, and the second is the proposed dimensions represent a character suitable for and indicative of the primary uses of the project. So when we're talking about variations, we're talking about variations with respect to underlying zoning. So because we're proposing to rezone this to residential multifamily, we're looking at the dimensional standards that the code allows for in that zone district, and we're, we're talking about how the PD overlay interacts with that. So there are really two main, uh, variations requested here as part of the application. Uh, the first is related to, uh, floor area, um, and the, um, relationship that that has with the overall gross lot area, so floor area ratio relative to gross lot area, and the second is related to height. And they're actually both, uh, kind of intertwined and, and related to each other. So I'm gonna go ahead and just do a quick breakdown of what the residential multifamily zone district is intended for, and how that is playing out in our community right now. So the zone district allows a floor area based on a sliding scale, based on, uh, the density for which an applicant, uh, develops, right? So a parcel density of less than one unit per fifteen hundred square feet of gross lot area is, uh, provides for an allowable floor area of point seven five to one. If you increase density by a little bit more, and you make it equal to or greater than one unit per fifteen hundred square feet, you increase your allowable floor area, one point two five to one. If you increase your density even more, you create parcel density equal to or greater than one unit per seven hundred and fifty square feet of gross lot area, your allowable floor area is maximized at one point five to one. Now, the reason that we have this in our code is because theoretically, smaller units, higher density is, uh, a little bit cheaper and more attainable for a full-time working resident if it's a free market development. So lower density, hu- bit larger, uh, unit size is generally more expensive, and as you get to higher density, each unit theoretically gets a little bit cheaper. And that leads to what we, we used to have, uh, which we called naturally occurring employee housing, which was in the free market. Um, as real estate prices have continued to, uh, increase, uh, we've seen this occurring, naturally occurring employee housing, um, become more rare over time, uh, but nonetheless, the, the code still has this sort of sliding scale, uh, in the, in the code. So I want to just show that and show how this development relates to this sliding scale. So if you were gonna look at, so before I jo- jump into this, um, so there are different ways to look at the, the density of this site, because this is a, a brand-new subdivision. So when we generally see a plan development, it's a single parcel, uh, with maybe one or two buildings on it, and it's really straightforward to determine the, you know, the amount of, uh, site coverage, the gross square footage of the, of the property, and then the, the floor area ratio that's allowed. In this instance, it's more complicated, because we have a street network, we have open space, we have places for future uses, childcare centers, so it's a large site with a lot of things going on, so there are different vantage's for which you can, uh, analyze this. So if you looked at the entire site, um, and, and tried to figure out, you know, what that comes to for density and floor area, you'll see that the gross site area is four hundred and eighty-seven thousand square feet, uh, the gross floor area is five hundred and thirty-one thousand square feet, which captures all three buildings that are proposed, and the density is one unit, uh, per seventeen hundred square feet with an FAR of one point zero nine. So that's more or less corresponds with this really low parcel density of one unit per fifteen hundred square feet. So that's one way of analyzing this. If you look at it from this vantage, it appears that there is a very low parcel density and a very high gross floor area. Now, if you take that same vantage and you reduce it to only the parcels where there are buildings proposed, this is vantage two, you take the cumulative parcels one A, two A, and three A, you'll see the gross site area goes down to two hundred and sixty-two thousand square feet, the gross floor area is the same, five hundred and thirty-one thousand square feet, but your density has suddenly increased to one unit, uh, per nine hundred and forty-eight square feet, or an FAR of two point zero two, which falls in the middle. We're increasing our density, we're still a little bit above what's allowed in terms of, uh, FAR, uh, but we've increased our density, which is, which is good, that's consistent with the code, uh, with trying to increase density. Now, if you just take it parcel by parcel, and just look at each, uh, parcel where there's a building proposed, you'll see that parcel one A, um, the gross site area goes to ninety thousand square feet, the gross area, gross floor area is two hundred and six thousand square feet, um, one unit per nine hundred and forty-eight, uh, square feet, and that's a FAR of two point two seven. So again, that falls in the middle category. Uh, again, there's a variation needed for the FAR of two point two seven, but we've increased our density by looking at it from this vantage. Again, parcel two, uh, same deal, gross site area is fifty-eight thousand square feet, gross floor area is a hundred and sixty-four thousand square feet, it's one unit per six hundred and thirty-eight square feet, uh, which is now the, falling into the highest density category, uh, in the, in the, uh, land use code, with a slightly higher FAR than what's allowed in the land use code. And then the last parcel is parcel three, I won't go through all of the numbers again, but, um, you know, this one falls in the middle, uh, one unit per thirteen hundred square feet, um, an FAR of one point four. So depending on how you look at this, the, the, um, variation that's needed, or that's requested, sort of, sort of varies. Uh, so I wanted to show that there are more than one vantage to kind of analyze this, given the amount of stuff that's going on in this parcel. Now that draws us directly to the next variation requested, which is related to height. So the RMF Zone District allows a maximum height of twenty-five feet if the parcel density is less than one unit per fifteen hundred square feet. You can increase your building height for the same reasons I mentioned previously, if you increase your density and you increase the affordability of your units, you get a bonus of, uh, thirty-two, uh, the height of thirty-two feet, uh, if you increase unit density to greater than one unit per fifteen hundred square feet. So, well, let's see how that plays out on the proposed, before I get there, mechanical equipment, uh, you can have up to six feet of mechanical equipment, and then renewable energy equipment is an additional ten feet, and these are measured from the point of attachment. Um, so if you think of a building as thirty-two feet on the roof, you add an additional ten feet of, uh, renewable energy equipment, you can get up to forty-two feet. So this is the, uh, rendering that the applicant showed, um, and I'll, I'll dive into the conversation about, um, you know, finished versus natural grade in a second, but I just want to show what's going on here. So, uh, the proposed height is measured from finished grade to the top of the parapet. The parapet itself, it's hard to see on the screen, but the parapet itself is five feet. So if you were, for, if you were theoretically not gonna have that parapet, or you just measured to the, to the roof, you know, you'd be at forty-four feet. The top of roof projections proposed are seven feet. So again, those would not be, those would not be, uh, those would not be fastened to the top of the parapet, those would be fastened to the top of the roof, right? So forty-nine feet minus five feet is forty-four feet. If you attach a projection to that, you get up to fifty-one feet. Same deal for renewable energy. Renewable energy is, uh, the applicant's requesting an additional fifteen feet, uh, from the point of attachment. So again, forty-four feet is the top of the roof, you attach renewable energy equipment to that, you would get up to a total of fifty-nine feet. So just want to make sure that's clear, it's not forty-nine plus fifteen, it's forty-four plus fifteen. Just want to make sure that's clear. The thing I want to mention about the solar panels, um, it's, it's hard to hear, see it on this, uh, sort of cross-section, but, uh, the height of the solar panels is not going to be fifteen feet across the entire roof. These solar panels are at a pitched angle, uh, to maximize, uh, the solar, uh, gain from the sun, so the fifteen feet is measured from the topmost point of the solar panels. Um, so what that means is, if you imagine a pitched roof, at a certain point, the, the top of the pitched roof is, is probably quite high, but if you're looking at it from the street, the, the bottom of the pitch is, is relatively low, so it really, uh, can make a big impact if, if the roof is pitched, and the same logic applies with these solar panels. They're not straight up and down adding fifteen feet, these are at a, at an angle, and at their highest point, they'll be an additional fifteen feet, so I think that's worth understanding. The other thing I want to mention here, so the, these are, these are the main, uh, sort of variations that are requested. Jumping into the conversation about, uh, the height from applicant's exchange with, uh, council member Guth, um, you know, the reason we have, uh, this measured from finished grade, in this instance, the first thing is to show for illustrative, illustrative purposes, uh, just so that the public can understand what's, what's going on here. Uh, but the other reason is, our zoning team reviews a lot of applications every year, and this was feedback that they believe would help everyone involved with the review understand what is proposed, because they generally have a lot of trouble, uh, with applications, trying to decipher how to measure this grade. And so this was a, a request of the zoning team to try to make things a little bit easier for them, uh, moving forward. But I want to mention that the code requires that building plans depict both natural and finished grade. So the applicant team will still need to put that together and show it, uh, for review, but because this is a PD, this is no different than any, any other PDs that we have in town. There are PDs that have, uh, Byzantine, uh, regulations on how to measure things like height, that have nothing to do with underlying zoning. So there's, there's nothing unique about this project, um, relative to other PDs as, as far as trying to measure this. That was simp- that was simply a way to try to make it a little bit easier on staff, but if council is interested in, in going with how the code reads, that's obviously an option, um, to, to think about. Uh, but what that does is, it makes it more restrictive, and maybe perhaps less desirable for developer or public-private partnership, so keep that in mind. The last thing I want to point out here is, the code says that RMF is typically found in the Aspen infill area and within walking distance of the center of town. This is what the code says about RMF. This site is located two miles outside the infill area. Uh, you could walk to town, it would take a little while. Um, there are plenty of bike shares that would make it definitely plausible to get from this site into town, but it's not located in town, it's not located in an environmentally sensitive area, it's not located in a view plane, so the context of the site makes sense for the height that is proposed in these buildings. And the height that is proposed for these buildings makes sense, because it makes this place more livable for residents. I showed this site plan before, but I'll mention again, the fact that these buildings are, are higher than what is allowed by code, provides an additional barrier, a physical barrier from the noise and from the pollution of the surrounding area for those open spaces. The applicant team could have made these buildings shorter and still tried to meet the number of units requested by council, but that would significantly cut into the open space, uh, that's on the site. So this was a purposeful plan, uh, the applicant team knew that there were some, uh, some give and take that needed to happen here, but, um, because of the trade-offs and the context of the site location, um, you know, staff believes that this, these criteria are met as far as these variations are concerned. Jumping into detailed review standards, these are, uh, again, a lot more straightforward, there are really no variations requested here, but I do want to point out a couple of the standards. Uh, the first is providing, uh, site grading, uh, should be simple, uh, and at-grade entrances should, uh, help accommodate those, uh, who need ADA access. Uh, you want to make sure you have adequate snow storage, uh, accommodated on the site. Um, so again, here's a rendering of, of what's proposed, the sidewalks, um, and the crosswalks and the entrances to the buildings are, they all meet ADA standards. Uh, the applicant team and myself have had multiple conversations with transportation and parks, engineering, to make sure that adequate snow storage, um, is provided. And as I mentioned previously, emergency access is provided, uh, to all vehicles, uh, who need it. So we find this criterion to be met. As far as energy efficiency is concerned, I won't spend a lot of time on this, uh, the applicant team covered this quite well, seventy-five percent renewable energy, uh, provided from these solar panels. Additionally, the, the walls of these buildings are gonna be thicker than what's prescribed or required by building code, uh, which is increase, improving the thermal envelope. Um, so we find this criterion to be met. As far as site lighting is, site lighting is concerned, um, all exterior lighting is going to meet our outdoor lighting standards, there will be adequate lighting in the parking areas to ensure a safe environment for drivers and pedestrians, uh, people walking to and from their car, uh, there will also be, uh, sensitive lighting that will be, uh, contextually sensitive to, uh, pedestrians along the sidewalks and the paths, um, that don't overwhelm the, the experience at night. And the applicant, uh, team and, and the application have, uh, ensured that the, uh, stars, um, will be able to be seen, uh, during the nighttime, again, complying with our lighting standards of the code, so we find this criterion to be met. Lastly, as far as exterior materials are concerned, um, we, again, we're trying to sort of straddle this request for flexibility, while also providing some guardrails, uh, to, uh, to potential developers. So what we've done in the ordinance is, um, you know, we've included some conditions, section twelve of the ordinance, um, you know, basically says, you know, the general types of materials that are going to be used, and it, it mentions that these materials need to have, uh, you know, minimal maintenance involved with them. So, uh, maintenance was a huge concern, and so we list the appropriate materials and ensure that those do not require, uh, you know, yearly maintenance and stuff like that. So we really tried to just get at the performance standard, uh, without being overly prescriptive about the types of materials. Uh, the other thing I want to mention is, given the nature of commodities in general, and, and going up and down, and, and the markets, uh, sort of not responding to logic, um, you know, the applicant team wants to be flexible with the types of materials that are determined at the time when it's appropriate to apply them. So this project is gonna be built several years out, right? Materials, the prices of things might change, and so that was factored into the ordinance. Transportation and parking. So what I'm showing here is the, uh, what I call the, the, uh, traffic circulation plan. Um, this was submitted in the application, and I just tried to highlight the main features of it, but the, the yellow area is, are the streets, the black areas are individual parking spaces, um, this little blue area here is the proposed bus station, uh, two bicycle share stations are proposed on the site. So all of these things were taken into account, and then, uh, this hatched area down here is, uh, the new intersection that's proposed. Um, right now, it's an uncontrolled, unsignalized intersection, um, and I'll talk about what's proposed there in, in a minute, but this is gonna be signalized. And then, uh, this hatched area here along the ABC Trail, this is a bicycle and pedestrian underpass that does not exist currently, and I'll show a photo of what's there now. So the transportation, uh, part of this has been, has been a topic of, of robust discussion, um, and I want to just preface it with the transportation impact analysis that was submitted by the transportation consulting firm Fair and Peers, um, and what they've determined in their, in their study was that, uh, developing this property, uh, under a worst-case scenario, which means there's no alternative modes of transportation provided, means you have to- provided, means you have to drive your car anytime you go anywhere. Under that scenario, a total of 50 vehicle trips would be added every hour, which equates to about one minute of additional waiting time during peak hours, which, peak hours is generally defined between 7:00 AM and 9:00 AM and 4:00 to 6:00 PM. So their analysis, you know, shows that there's not a significant impact on the vehicle wait times between this project and the city center of Aspen. But what this does do is it provides a lot of housing opportunity for people who live down valley, who commute, you know, instead of going two miles into town, they're going to go 40 miles into town or 30 miles into town. So regional traffic, vehicle miles driven are going to be reduced as a result of this The other thing I want to point out is RFTA is currently operating less bus service than, than they want to be providing because of the housing crunch that we're experiencing. So they can't afford, and they cannot hire enough drivers to provide full service. And so what that means is buses are coming less often, and as people are down valley waiting for buses, if the bus takes too long to come, they're going to jump in their car and make a trip up valley. This happened to me a couple of months ago. I was coming to work and I had to, one of the buses got canceled, and it was another 20 minutes, so I had to drive all the way up to work. And I'm sure there were probably other people that day that did the same. So it's worth noting, you can't necessarily quantify it, but this project has the potential to actually reduce the number of miles driven just because we're going to shore up our existing As far as, oh, sorry, this, this is the key that I should have shown. As far as parking is concerned, I want to break down what the code requires and what is proposed here. So our code is quite unique because we prescribe parking in units. You'll see on my screen here, parking requirement in units. And the term unit is, it can be misleading because a parking unit does not necessarily mean a parking space. A parking unit can either be an onsite parking space, or it can be cash and lieu. And so we allow a combination of those two things in order to meet parking mitigation. So when you're looking at a residential multifamily as a single use, you need lesser of one parking unit per bedroom or two parking units per dwelling unit. So this is what's required by code. And this is how you can break it out. So onsite parking provision, you need to have at least 60% of your parking onsite. You can have up to 100% if you want, but you don't need to. You can have up just to 60%. You can then offset the remainder with a 40% of cash and lieu. The applicant is proposing 100% onsite parking, which I've done a few affordable housing projects over the years, and I've never seen any developer provide 100% onsite parking. And the reason for this was because of concerns in the neighborhood, the ABC neighborhood of residents who don't want to have more parking impacts in front of their business or in front of their residence. So the applicant team has provided ample onsite parking. In addition to be, being fully parked, they're, they're providing an additional 11 spaces that are not even required by code. Half of that parking is going to be underground, below the footprint of these buildings, and the other half is going to be on-street parking for the remainder, for the remainder of the So I, I just want to point that out, that this is fully parked, but the applicant team could have reduced the onsite parking by, by up to 40% if, if desired. The other thing I want to show here is just the changes to the intersections between this site and the ABC. So bubble A on, on this screen here is just showing the existing intersection. You can see that it's an uncontrolled, unsignalized intersection. There's a bicyclist that just crossed that, but I've crossed it personally myself. It can be fraught with peril. Cars are turning in and out of there, and it's not a great environment for someone who's biking to and from the ABC. And so the applicant, application is going to not only improve that for cars by providing a signalized intersection to improve safety, they're going to build that pedestrian underpass to increase the level of service for pedestrians and bicyclists in the area. As we discussed, as Chris mentioned, the intersection alignment is consistent with the C dot access control plan. And it's, again, it's intended to provide the accommodations needed to, to safely maneuver your vehicle while also increasing the pedestrian experience. One thing that I want to point out that was mentioned in the planning and zoning commission hearing, and council members, I think, I, I put this in the memo, just pointing it out, that the commission recommends further study of the intersection of Highway 82 and the lumberyard to determine if it can safely meet a level of service of C or higher. So I want to just touch on this point really quick. Level of service is a term that was defined by the Federal Highway Administration about 40 or 50 years ago. It's not prescribed, it's not required to be used, it's simply a guideline, and FHWA itself acknowledges that other factors should be taken into account in addition to level of service. Right now, the level of service of this road is below C. So trying to square this recommendation of, of building an intersection to make this level of, of, level of service C or better, I'm not sure how that will play out. The idea of building an underpass here as well is the same situation. The, the level of service here is, at peak times, it's a level of service of F, which means that traffic is at a standstill, bumper-to-bumper traffic. Building an underpass here might improve the exit of someone who's leaving the lumberyard to go to work into Aspen for a few thousand feet, but eventually they're going to merge in with the rest of traffic and be part of that level of service of F. So by building an underpass, what we have effectively might be doing here is inducing additional demand by encouraging people to take single occupant vehicle trips because they can bypass some of the traffic, because it's faster for them to bypass a little bit of traffic, instead of deciding to take the bus or to ride a bike. This is a planning term. I used to be a transportation planner in my previous life. This is a term called induced demand. As you increase capacity on a freeway, the capacity eventually fills back up, and you spend a lot of money not really getting anywhere, which is why we see in a place like Los Angeles, they have, you know, 10 lanes across, and the traffic is at a standstill. Building an underpass here is not going to fix that problem, because these cars are eventually going to have to merge back with traffic. There's a famous study, if council members are interested, in Katy, Texas. The freeway at this point, I think, is coming up onto 30 lanes. And as they have added more lanes, traffic times have gotten slower. So this is a much bigger issue than the lumberyard, and I don't think it's something that this project's going to solve, but I do think it's worth acknowledging that regional miles are going to be reduced because of this project. This is the drawing of the underpass. And then next thing I want to point out is the bubble B. This is existing intersection at Sage Way and the ABC. This intersection, consistent with the C dot access control plan, is proposed for removal. Right now, it's, again, it's uncontrolled, unsignalized. The plan is to fill that in and continue the connection of the ABC trail. Last thing I want to point out, transportation and parking. The Annie Mitchell Trail is currently aligned, the alignment of the Annie Mitchell Trail currently looks like this. It sort of hugs the side of the mountain rescue. To accommodate the footprint of Building 3, the applicant team is proposing to straighten that out. Again, it won't not impact, significantly change the course of someone's route to and from town, but that is what's proposed. It'll remain connected to the ABC trail. Okay, excuse me. Last thing I'm going to show here, growth management. So this is the last review I'm going to talk about. Public infrastructure and facilities. The proposed development shall upgrade public infrastructure and facilities to serve the project. Improvements shall be at the sole cost of the developer. Public infrastructure includes water, supply, sewage, treatment, energy, and communication. All of these basic infrastructure improvements are going to be developed by the city of Aspen. Fire and police protection, I want to mention. The packet has an attachment, a letter from the new police chief that indicates that this project will not overwhelm police or emergency response times, which is a good thing. And we also have other letters throughout the different exhibits, just showing that the, you know, the city of Aspen utilities and, and the, you know, wastewater management, none of those current capacities are going to be, you know, overcapacity because of this project. So we find this criterion to be met. I do want to show the proposed unit sizes as this relates to growth management. So here are the, the breakdowns. We have one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom. The proposed unit size of each of these units is shown here, and you'll see the minimum unit size required. Now, this is, this requirement is not in our code, but it's a requirement from APSHA. APSHA wants to make sure that, you know, affordable housing units are livable and that they, they have a, you know, minimum number of square feet. But what they do, what they do say is that you can reduce the minimum unit size by up to 20% if you provide other accommodations to improve livability. So what we're talking about here really is Building 1. That's the unit that is slightly below what APSHA wants to see, 5% below. So it's not 20% below, it's, it's 5% below, which is roughly 33 square feet. As far as providing other onsite amenities, our, our code should, you know, provides some examples of what might, might, what might be considered an onsite amenity. So the first is private outdoor space. Each of these units is going to have its own private balcony or private porch area, again, which is a great thing for tenants who live in these units. There's plenty of open space, which is another option to meet the livability standards. Tenants don't have to come all the way into town to enjoy the open space of a park. They can simply walk out their door, and there are plenty of nicely sized open spaces on the site. And the other thing I want to point out is there are common areas inside the building. So this is just a little call-out of the space in Building 1. There's a common seating area, there's a fitness area, common restrooms. All of that provides a sense of community and allows people to interact in the common areas instead of just being in their rooms. So that is something that's worth pointing out. And each of the buildings has its own area for this, so I think that's, that's worth looking at as, as well as, as far as it relates to livability. So with that, staff recommends the following. We recommend approval of major public project, amendments to the official zone district map, planned development, project review, and detailed review, major subdivision, transportation and parking, and growth management quota system. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Thank you, Kevin. Council members, we've been sitting here for a little bit, so is our audience, so I want to take a brief recess, but if there's anything that you want to ask immediately, let's do that.
I'm happy to weigh in with my question.
Yeah, because I think this is going to be a little bit more detailed of questions. So, all right. If you guys don't mind, I'm going to recommend five-minute recess, just to give everybody a chance to get up and stretch out and take care of a bio break.
The bio break.
All right, I used it. All right, I used it. I think I might have. We're back in session. This is the Aspen City Council Session. Meeting regarding ordinance 10, lumberyard affordable housing project. We just took a quick break, but we are back. We have had a couple of presentations, one by the applicant, one by city staff, and we are ready to follow up with a few questions for city staff. And then we, of course, are going to take public comment this evening as well. Let's see, so I'll start off. Kevin, if I could. When it comes to reviews, you talk about the flexibility that is around the detailed reviews. But what's the flexibility available in the project review? Items such as height, number of units, and the like. Is there flexibility? Do we ever do project reviews where we approve numbers like up to 277 units, parking spaces up to 439, and the like? What's, what's our procedure with that when it comes to project review?
It's a really good question. As you're asking that, I'm actually pulling up the ordinance. I want to put it on the screen so members of the public can see it as well. I can show a couple of examples that we've included in the ordinance, just to get at what you're, what you're asking. So let me, let me just get to the right section here. Okay, so here's the, the dimensional table that we have put in the ordinance. You'll see number of dwelling units, maximum building height. But, you know, we're happy to change it to whatever council, you know, sees fit. Our, our logic here, and I could just run through each of these, these rows, but number of dwelling units, we didn't want to put up to because we don't want to necessarily reduce the density that the community has told us that they want. So we didn't put a lot of flexibility there. We just said 277 dwelling units. Maximum building height, we put maximum because it could be less, it will be less in a lot of areas, but it could be up to that at certain points. And then, you know, same thing with roof projections and renewable energy projections. The, the main flexibility that we've put in here is, one thing I want to show is gross floor area. So you'll see the gross floor area, 531,000 square feet. You'll notice that we didn't attribute this to any parcel. There's no parcels that say, you know, parcel 1A is going to be 2,000, 200,000 square feet, parcel, you know, 2B will be X amount. So what that does is it provides flexibility to whoever's developing this to shift floor area around if they need as they, as they get through it. If they decide that building three needs more storage and they didn't use all the floor area from building two, they can, they can use that. Same thing with number of dwelling units. If we decide that building one should have less dwelling units and building two should have more than what the applicant team, you know, represented, we have the flexibility to do that. None of these are attributed to any single parcel. The last thing I'll point out here, as far as flexibility is concerned, is number of parking units. I mentioned previously, parking units does not necessarily mean parking spaces, right? So we didn't put parking spaces here, we put parking units. And as long as this ratio is met, which is what is represented in the application, 1.57 parking units per dwelling unit, then we're good. So the applicant team, if they want, they can reduce their parking, not the applicant team, the, the developer, when it actually gets to building, if they want to reduce parking, they can pay fee and lieu, and they'll still meet this requirement, just in a different way. So these are some of the sort of inherent flexibility provisions that we've sort of thought through. Obviously happy to change whatever, what our council feels fit, but this is, this has all been, this is kind of how we thought about it as we, as we crafted this.
Thank you for that. This might be a question for the design team perhaps, but I'm wondering about the phasing of buildings one, two, and three, and working from the west to the east it looks, or north to the south. I always forget how it's actually, but I'm wondering about the phasing and, and why it was chosen in that direction, and if there's other options there. And I guess through these review, it would, you're saying that it does not delineate, no, it would. It would delineate by phase.
What, what would delineate?
So building one, building two, building three, and go, and, and working that direction. Our approvals would be for all three buildings, but the phasing that's being proposed is in that sequence. And I'm just wondering about that, why that sequence is chosen and such.
Sure. I'll share my screen again so everyone understands what we're talking about. So to clarify, you're wondering why would we go building one, building two, building three, and not in some other order?
Correct.
Okay. So I can't speak to why we start from left and go right? Maybe that's just how you, how you read a book or something? But the reason why we're, it's contemplated in this manner is because as these buildings come online, we want to sort of isolate them from the construction phases of the latter buildings. So by doing it in this way, and, you know, we wouldn't want to start with building two and have people move in there, and then build, building three and building one around it because they're going to have construction on two sides. So by doing it in this phased way, we kind of isolate the impacts of the construction because we want residents to move in as quickly as possible. Does that answer your question?
So also, phase three is contemplated as the for sale, and phasing it with building one as rental, building two as rental would prioritize the sooner delivery of rental. We're in the process of delivering 79 new ownership condominiums this year, and the priority was then to deliver rental units next, and then pushing further ownership delivery off further into the future. So there was timing related to that sequencing as well.
I, i- if that wasn't the case, if building three was not delineated as ownership, would that, would that impact how you would look at phasing a project like this? Would you prefer to start over on building three end and work your way out, or do you work at the beginning and work your way in?
In this case, because of the location of the entrance, it can work either way. But had we approached the programming of the site differently, we may have approached the phasing differently, but they were related.
And then I have a couple other questions about some specifics as we go along, but council members, this is an opportunity for you to ask questions of staff to clarify with the presentation that you just seen, and then we're going to have some public comment, and it'll come back to us after that. So questions at this time? Sam, you seem ready.
Start with an easier one. Where the childcare facility is like potentially proposed, is that still going to be zoned residential multifamily? And could it become commercial at some point? Or like, what are the other uses that it could potentially be?
Sure, that's a good question. Yeah, it would be part of the rezoning of this for just the sake of simplicity. Childcare facilities, I believe, are a conditional use that's allowed in that zone district. You have to go through Planning and Zoning Commission review, I have to confirm that, but I believe that would be compatible with the zone district. But you can always rezone it to something else if you, if, if council wanted to do that at some point in the future, because it's, it's, it's its own parcel. You would want to assess some of the surrounding uses and make sure you're not getting into what we call spot zoning, where you put a zone district that's inconsistent with all the surrounding zone districts, which is sort of like a blob that's in the middle of something that isn't compatible, because that's pursuant to state statute, that's something that is, is not allowed. But I don't think zoning it in a commercial use would be, I can't, I can't say for certain, I'd have to do an analysis on it, but because this is in the ABC, there's a lot of commercial uses, theoretically, it could, it could be done.
Okay. Thank you for that. As far as, you know, you say all the criteria is met for all these different criteria. Could you explain what variances are being requested? Is it just the height that is an actual variance from what is allowed? Or is there other, did I miss any others?
Yeah, so, so yeah, height is one, and then the other one was, and I maybe made it too complicated in my showing of the slides, but I was trying to show that FAR is a variant, variation that's requested, but depending on how you look at the FAR, depending on the vantage at which you look at it, the variation sort of, the, the scope of variation sort of changes. So in some instances, it's a huge variation, in other instances, not so much. Does that make sense?
Yes, that does make sense. This is not a nefarious, but just a kind of a curiosity question of, has staff ever recommended denial on a City of Aspen project? And I don't ask like there's anything nefarious going on, I just am curious, because I think after sitting on P and Z and having an applicant and the city sort of do their presentations, it's funny to have the city and the city do their presentations. And I, I use the words conflict of interest lightly, just because why would you ever, you know, propose a project that you were going to deny? But has that ever happened where the city has agreed with it? Well, there's actually been getting up, so.
Sure. There, so, that's a good question. So that, yeah, I, you know, the, the dynamic of the city being the applicant and the city sort of, you know, responding to that application is definitely, the optics, you know, are, appear somewhat perilous, but there's a lot of nuance to that. So, you know, Chris Everson is in the asset department, they're, they're a completely different department, and I'm in the community development department, and I, I didn't see this application until it was submitted formally as a land use application. And so, you know, we tried to be as forthcoming as possible with, with that, but yeah, there's definitely some challenges with, you know, I guess, the, the, the community optics, but...
If I may, I, I would like to address the conflict of interest question, Mayor. Um, there's nothing about this that presents a conflict of interest directly to any council member or the mayor sitting here to review this. The code that was applied is the same code that's applied to all applications, and I just want the public to be aware of that. But when you, when you use the term conflict of interest, that has a certain legal meaning, and I just wanted to address that. You raised that as a concern, and I just want to be clear that, that serving in your role and having the city be the applicant does not in and of itself create a conflict of interest, and I know of none in this case with any of the council members. And I don't know what Mr.
I do think it is an interesting relationship, there's no doubt about it. I will say that I think it's the role of the land use code, right? I mean, and I think it's the role of the review criteria is we look at every development project that we have. Now certainly, there are review criteria that are more subjective than others, and we're making an evaluation about, you know, things like height, and things like floor area, and things like, are there, you know, very tangible things? Is there, you know, vehicular access available to every parcel in a subdivision? Some of them are, are very objective, some of them are more subjective. But I think that that's the role of the land use code. And, you know, I, you know, I think Kevin is exactly right. You know, his review has been, you know, certainly in, in conversations with the applicant team as they've gone forward, but ultimately, it's, it's an evaluation of the project on the review criteria.
Thank you. I just, I appreciate having, hearing those answers, just to like know the mindset, at least, of each one of you, and to know that you didn't see the application until after it was submitted. So that's good. And I don't have any more questions, I do have transportation comments. Is that...
Maybe hold on to them until after public comment.
Sounds good.
John, I'll look your way. Any questions for Kevin at this time?
None. It's been very, very clear presentation, plus the three of us have sat through a lot of this already.
Okay. Ford, I'll go down to your end. Questions for Kevin?
Yeah, I don't know how to, who to ask this question of, but we're, we're being asked for a land use approval that's including the PD. And Tori's question is one that is important to me as well, as you pointed out, 277 units, and I want to know, up to 277 units, is that a possibility? Which gives, what your answer was, Kevin, was that you could redistribute those 277 between the different phases and parcels. And I think the question that I want to know is, if we approve this land use, this application, are we locked into 277 units? Or can we have fewer than 277 units?
So the way the ordinance is written right now... So the way the ordinance is written right now, it a minimum of two hundred and seventy seven units need to be built. With that said, there is, you know, option for council to tweak that and say up to two hundred and seventy seven units. The only thing I would mention about that is I would caution council, because we don't know exactly the nature of. The relationships that the city will have with partners moving forward. If we get in a a relationship with a public private partnership with someone and they decide it would be better for their bottom line to reduce the number of units. And we allow that in the ordinance, then, you know, we might find ourselves in trouble down the line, so. Having some guardrails is is a good thing. And I, you know, the applicant team, based on their their feedback is the. Community sentiment is is this is the density that we want. So council always has the option to to change that or to open that up more. But given that the the unknown nature of how this is actually going to be built. That might be something worth considering.
In the. Forty nine feet, that that excludes the solar, because the solar is a freebie, basically?
Forty nine feet is a is measured to the top of the parapet. That does not include the solar. The solar is measured from forty four forty four feet, because the parapet is five feet, so forty nine minus five. And then you add fifteen feet, so that would be, was it fifty nine? Fifty nine feet total, yep.
And. I mean. I've gone through four years of this design process, and I feel. Is it, it's as though it's part of me and I I, all of the things that we've looked at tonight, architectural design, the site layout, all of that. I I've sat through all of those and. But I want to separate that ownership of it from being defensive of it. I've gone through it and what I'm getting at, I think is if we approve this, how much of what has been presented tonight is locked into? The approvals. If we're, I I want the most flexibility possible, if we if we're locked into. Specific site design, specific architecture, specific counts. Does that preclude us or make it more difficult for us to get a development partner for the project? Our projects if they're done in phases?
Yeah.
That's okay, you don't need to necessarily respond, he's putting that out there as his feelings. You don't have a crystal ball to tell him how it's going to work out with development, and we'll come back to that, because that's a shared concern from a lot of people, so. Unless, Ward, if I'm wrong, if you're looking for a specific answer from Kevin on that, aside from the fact that he has said, yes, you do have. Some ability to write the language for this ordinance in the direction that you're talking.
I I don't expect an answer from Kevin on how it how it affects potential private partners to come in. But I I I do want some kind of guidance on how how much are we locking into on all the designs?
Okay. We'll come, we'll come back to that, it's there's going to be more, that's not the only issue that's going to be discussed. Thank you, Ward, did you have any other questions of Kevin at this time?
No.
All righty, Bill?
Thanks. Kevin, good presentation, thanks for being time efficient. And still thorough at the same time, could you flip to the noise slide that you presented, please?
Sure.
Noise study. And the next one with the concentric rings of the, that one, perfect, thanks. It appears to me, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that this focuses on noise exclusively from the airport and not from the highway? Is that accurate? It might maybe a Chris question, too.
Chris, do you want to answer this?
This piece of it does, but there was a separate piece where we where we did noise measurements on the site as well.
Okay, and where was the D and L level of all noise combined on the site?
It's included in one of our submissions, I don't have the information off the top of my head, I would have to go back and research the submissions about that.
Okay, is it under sixty five?
I believe so.
I'd I'd love follow up information on that, but as long as it's under sixty five, that gives me some.
It's been submitted as part of the application.
Okay, thanks. Could you speak about the parcelization strategy to me? Sort of in general, and then specifically why five and six are parceled separately for stormwater purposes? I'm not sure who's best to answer that one, I think it's. Kevin went into a little more detail about it than Kristen.
I don't, Chris, do you want to speak to the reasoning behind why you put parcel five and six as separate? I mean, because they're they're not contiguous is my answer, I mean, there are different locations on the site, and so. A parcel needs to be a contiguous shape. But these are both serving the same purpose of which is stormwater management, they're on opposite sides of the of the site. Does that answer the question?
Partially, yeah, I mean, I guess it could be part of two B, six and two B could be together, I I don't, I'm curious and understanding. The general parcelization strategy, if it's driven by the phasing and then by different uses or or what, and then specifically about the stormwater uses. I think you partially answered the stormwater question.
Sure. So in terms of maintaining developer flexibility, we feel as though putting the plan development in place generally does help to attract developers, and this is part of that. We want to try to make it so that we can land lease out, you know, parcel one A and the associated parcels. For the potential vertical development. Operation of building one on a long term land lease, right? So that would include parcel one A, parcel one B provides parking for parcel one A, parcel one D does so also. So those parcels would give us a definable boundary to include in a land lease. We have the option to then include parcel five and parcel six with that land lease if we decide that that developer should maintain those stormwater infrastructure areas. Or maybe it could be that the city decides to maintain those stormwater infrastructure areas on its own, so it is to maximize flexibility in those areas. Similarly, parcel two A and parcel two B, they're, you know, divided by the right of way, so they have to be separate, if not for the right of way, they they, you know, we would like them to be. Contiguous, but the right of way splits those, so again, parcel two A and two B would be related in the same way.
And I'll just add too that it's it's not just right of way, those will be publicly dedicated roadways, so that's the difference then. And the land on either side becomes its own parcel, it's not just an easement.
So essentially, it's to maximize, it's like puzzle pieces that we can include inland, different land leases, or they could be combined together in one larger land lease. If we decided to do phase one and phase two at the same time. And so we could talk about all those different variations on how we could implement financial plans to implement in different ways. And we could do that subsequent to an approval or, you know, after a pause in the approval process, either way.
Okay, and is it accurate that? There are, at least in your strategy, there are no. Building height FAR calculations that factored into the parcelization strategy and no property taxation impacts that were factored into the strategy?
Absolutely none.
Okay, thanks. Kevin, can the renewable energy roof projections be attached to the seven foot roof projections thereby making them cumulative?
I'm sorry, so can you?
Can I have the seven feet of roof projections, what you called roof projections? And then can I attach the fifteen foot solar arrays to that increased height limit?
No, no, these need to be attached to the roof.
Okay, and is that somewhere explicitly spelled out, because in the ordinance, it wasn't that clear to me?
We can certainly create more prescriptive language if if that's what you want to get.
I I don't know if it's already in Title twenty six somewhere or not, but.
It's generally how we apply the code. We usually say to the to the point of attachment, but we don't. We don't ever, I I don't think we've ever allowed someone to attach. Something like that to something that's already appended to the to the roof.
Okay, we may want to be more explicit.
We can certainly be more explicit.
Thanks. And then, Kevin, none of your language in your presentation to me. Seemed like you had any concerns about any elements of this project. Do you have any concerns that you want to share with us about this project, any elements of this project that? Don't perfectly fit the city's standards, or or are there concerns that you did have that have been addressed by the applicant up to this point?
We we've had quite a bit of back and forth, you know, I've been working with this applicant since November on this application. We've had multiple meetings with all the departments. So I'm trying to think back to the some of the issues we've worked out, you know, some things have had to be tweaked and and stuff like that, but. We've really worked out, I think, a lot of the the main kinks as you get into development, there's obviously things that come up, but. I I think the applicant team has done a good job of taking the public feedback that they've been given in the council direction and and coming up with something that. Not only responds to community concerns, but responds to the environment around it. You know, if if the city of Aspen could, we would build housing in in the infill area, that's unfortunately not the economic or political reality. So this is the next best spot, and I think they've done a great job to accommodate it.
Okay, great, could you elaborate on what some of those main kinks were that you worked out?
One of the kinks was, I'm trying, you know, the. One of the roads needed additional space for snow storage, for example, so we've we've, you know, changed that, the underpass. At certain points needs to be a little bit more narrow because of the turning radius for bikes and pedestrians. Really just technical things like that, nothing of significance that would, you know, fundamentally. Change the the project. I can't, I, you know, I'll keep thinking, but I, off the top of my head, there's nothing that really has that came up that was like, oh, this is a major red flag, we, you know. A lot of this stuff has been has been pretty much worked out, we've had a lot of, you know, all of our departments. Our staff with professionals in their respective field, and so everyone has had a chance to have their hands on this thing and weigh in. And we've had a lot of back and forth and and I I don't, I had, yeah, there was nothing that really that comes to mind right now.
Thanks, and agree. Specific to the rezoning effort, is there any precedent for rezoning conservation and rural remote? Is it rural remote?
Rural residential, yeah.
Rural residential, thank you for clarifying that. Any precedent for rezoning those specific zone uses to something else in recent history?
Is there precedent for a rural residential or a conservation zone district in a different part of town to be rezoned?
Yeah, has it happened anywhere else where we've taken something that was specifically designated as either conservation or rural residential and rezoned that?
Oh. Can you answer that?
I think I know of a parcel perhaps.
Lift one A.
Lift one A had had conservation, that's right.
Yeah. Ben, did you want to add to that?
Very briefly, first of all, we don't have a ton of rural residential within the city of Aspen's limits. In some areas that came in to the city from the county, there was some kind of residual, I will say, in Kevin's description. Of that particular piece of property as it came in, it was it was an unusual sort of outcome of the Burlingame subdivision. The discussion was very clear with council, but some of the the plating documents about about how that that parcel was drawn, what the dimensions of that parcel were drawn were a little unusual. But there's not a ton of rural residential within the city, and conservation is an interesting zone district because of that word. I have a view of conservation that when I came in from elsewhere about what something zone C would be. The city's had a different view of that zoning over time. The primary location where conservation shows up in town has been at the base of the mountain. In the lift one lift one zone, if you look at the underlying zoning for Gondola Plaza, it's underlying zone C. And so that idea of conservation, you know, there's a lot of conditional uses that is allowed in conservation, and so. You know, I I think that the. That nomenclature causes some confusion about what it is. And so I do think very clearly, based on my understanding of parcel three, of what makes up most of parcel three A on on the drawing there. What what we call the triangle parcel. You know, regardless of what zoning was on it, that came out of the Burlingame subdivision process. It's consistent with the discussion of of what the the future use was going to be.
Thanks, I appreciate you answering all of my questions.
Thanks, Bill.
Oh, oh, oh. Follow up on Bill's and the question about conservation. Just one clarification on conservation zone versus conservation easement.
Sure, yeah, those are two things that are commonly sort of mixed up, so. Conservation easement generally is is much more restrictive about what can can and cannot happen on a parcel. Usually when there's a conservation easement placed on a parcel, there's benefit to the owner. And as in exchange for that, they, you know, really can't put any sort of development on it, or depending on what the easement says. They usually don't have any development rights in the area where the easement is located, whereas conservation zoning. There are development rights associated with it, if you look in our code, there's a list of allowed uses, I can't remember off the top of my head what they are, but. You know, it's certainly, it's certainly. Something that can be developed, whereas a conservation easement generally, you know, keeps the land open and and pristine.
So that to follow up on that, the triangle was zone conservation. Deer Hill is zone conserv is a conservation easement, meaning that it cannot be developed.
That's right, yep. Yeah, you got it, and when we did the subdivision back in November with council, I showed some slides. I showed the history of the Deer Hill Conservation Easement, and when it was subdivided. I showed some slides of why, you know, we this this little tri, we call it the triangle parcel, because it's a triangle. This little area was set aside when the conservation easement was created. It was set aside outside of the conservation easement specifically for this affordable housing project. And it was not part of the conservation easement, even though it was part of the fathering parcel where the conversation, where the. Conservation easement was placed.
I just wanted to clarify that because there have been suggestions, recommendations, or requests that Deer Hill be used as part of this. Lumberyard development, and I I just wanted to clarify that there is a conservation easement on Deer Hill that I think came from the Barr X purchase in Burlingame.
That's correct, yeah, and the conservation easement is held by the Aspen Valley Land Trust, and they even sent a letter when we subdivided. This triangle parcel, they submitted a letter from their board of directors saying that this was consistent with the conservation easement, that this parcel was always set aside for affordable housing development. And that they approve of this being, you know, sort of cut off from that remain remaining part of Deer Hill. And that, you know, the Deer Hill Conservation Easement is is in perpetuity, so there's no plans to develop that in the future.
Thank you, Kevin.
All right, with that. Did we circulate it, we probably don't need it this evening, we're going to take public comment this evening, this is ordinance ten, series of twenty twenty three. If there's members of the public that wish to comment this evening, you are more than welcome to, I will be stopping you at three minutes per commenter.
Ed Cross with the presentation.
Yeah, is that a green light? Got it.
You should have that ready for me, mate. Ed Cross.
Ed Cross, just some comments. I thought I enjoyed the presentation, I'm pleased that they're looking to build it. Very properly. And you guys have spent an extraordinary amount of time on this project, as well you should. It adds a good number of units to your inventory. And then we come to the price tag. Which I think things cost what they cost, and if you do it properly, it's going to cost that amount. And years ago, I was on the ski patrol on Aspen Mountain, I know Sam's a first responder. I'm sure you gentlemen are all familiar with the term triage. And I would just say if you were triaging. The affordable housing in Aspen and its current state. The centennial rentals was, in my opinion, a big screw up by not securing the deed restriction in perpetuity. The centennial owned condominiums are eventually facing. Via the lawsuit, losing them to the free market, or. We're stuck in a situation where we can't fund it to fix it. And therefore, we're looking at. Them falling down essentially, and that can be remedied currently in the range of twelve million. I would just think that you look to fixing. The major problems in the current inventory. And before you move forward with efforts to fund this, thanks.
Thank you, Ed.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Dylan Johns, and I'm here today on behalf of Mountain Rescue Aspen. Where I've been a member for almost six years, and just also will refer to Mountain Rescue as MRA. For clarity purposes. First, I'd like to thank the council members and the mayor for all the hard work that you've done on this project and for the community. MRA has been engaging with the city's project team and the public outreach session since twenty twenty. And has had multiple meetings with members of the team, of the project team to discuss the project and its impacts to MRA. These meetings have been productive, and MRA would like to thank Chris Everson, Sarah Connect One, and Roaring Fork Engineering. For their time and attention to these concerns. A letter was sent to MRA by Sarah on March third, twenty twenty-three, that letter was included in your packets. And memorialized some of the conversations which had taken place up to that point. To get into a little bit of the history and mission of Mountain Rescue, since that is something which. A lot of the community knows kind of more visibly what we do on the rescue side of things. Behind all of that, MRA is a hundred percent volunteer, five oh one C three nonprofit consisting of fifty members and approximately ten associate members and trainees. MRA was officially organized in nineteen sixty-five with the mission of saving lives through backcountry rescue and mountain safety education. MRA serves as a resource available to the Picking County Sheriff for backcountry rescue and deploys at the request of the sheriff. MRA principally operates within Picking County, although it can be asked to deploy resources to other areas of the state through mutual aid requests. Although MRA's property often appears vacant, MRA responds to an average of eighty, roughly eighty missions throughout the year. While not common, MRA may also respond to multiple instances simultaneously, and multiple missions can occur any time of year. Notably, this past Saturday, where we had two come in within a half hour of each other. And we could have had one earlier in the morning, but that was resolved before we got called out. MRA primarily relies on donations to support its operational activities and has no tax funding sources or public funds other than limit. Operational expense reimbursement through the Colorado Search and Rescue Reimbursement Fund. The CB Cameron Rescue Center was completed in twenty fifteen and was designed and built principally for MRA's use. However, it also serves a number of other community functions. The Rescue Center serves as an alternate backup nine one one dispatch center for Picking County. An incident command center for larger events such as X Games, pandemic task forces. Any major airport emergencies or area wildfire responses. And as a meeting and training facility for other agencies such as the Picking County Sheriff's Department and Picking County's Road and Bridge crews. Development impacts of the lumberyard will be present with any increased level of development and use of the lumberyard property. However, it seems as though we feel that those concerns can be remedied. Number one on that list is going to be operational readiness, and that is of paramount importance for our organization. Components of that include vehicular access to MRA's property being maintained at all times before, during, and after construction takes place. Services and utilities to the Rescue Center need to be uninterrupted and backup provisions ready in the event of unplanned interruptions. MRA would also respectfully request that the lumberyard project and construction teams. Continue to provide a high level of communication with MRA through the process. Examples include continue to coordinate relevant design items with MRA and work with MRA to resolve any issues affecting operational needs. Provide points of contact who can effectively resolve any issues related to operational issues during the phases of the project's construction. Coordinate any work that might affect MRA's operations in advance, and if possible, schedule potentially disruptive work during historically less active periods of rescue activity. Keep MRA regularly appraised in advance of project construction activities and scheduled work that could have an impact on operations. Second point is access. Maintaining the existing northern driveway location will maximize our operational efficiency and best preserve onsite resources. The Rescue Center access was located per C dot's direction in accordance with the two thousand twelve. Intergovernmental agreement for the State Highway eighty-two access control plan. The access location then informed the building design and site planning. It was known at the time that the lumberyard property would ultimately be developed for affordable housing. And currently, the driveway location is the most direct path of access to Highway eighty-two and will max. Minimize the number of potential conflicts with lumberyard residents and guests. MRA has been working with the Picking County Sheriff's Office to obtain the ability to use intersection clearing devices to provide a safe and quick path of travel. To Highway eighty-two when responding to missions. C dot has verbally affirmed in a May thirty-first meeting with city staff, MRA, and Roaring Fork Engineering that they will allow MRA to maintain its. Current driveway location, however, C dot has yet, not yet acknowledged that decision in writing. Reconfiguring access to the south would reduce the number of onsite parking spaces available on MRA's property, which is currently configured for thirty-one. And any loss of parking would be detrimental to MRA's operations. MRA and the city have agreed to provide an access easement in the southern portion of the property to allow for temporary construction access if needed. And also allow for future permanent use if an alternative access needs to. Needs to be in place once the development has commenced. Current lumber, the current lumberyard site plan design will accommodate this without impacting the existing designs of the roadway trailer infrastructure. Number three would be security, due to the higher level and density of use that will surround MRA's property as a result of the development. Additional perimeter security will need to be installed. In order to prevent unauthorized use of MRA's property and keep potential operational conflicts from happening. A gate will need to be installed on MRA's property to preclude unauthorized parking in a building which often appears to be vacant and unused.
Dylan?
Yes.
Have you submitted this letter to us or staff?
I will be submitting a copy of this.
Okay, you're a couple of minutes over, a couple of minutes, and so if you want to wrap it up, these are all great items that need to be considered.
Sure. All right, to touch on a couple of things in addition. With respect to parking, MRA would emphatically request that council directs the design team to provide as much parking as is realistically possible. Within the lumberyard area, given the operational requirements, our limited onsite parking. And other agencies operating at the same time. We support the trail reconfiguration to minimize conflicts. And construction details of that still should be worked out to make sure that that doesn't affect our. Operations along with the installation of utilities. One last comment would be, any opportunity to discuss any kind of dedicated first responder would be welcome, we have discussed this in previous meetings, we do understand what some of the restrictions around that are. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have at this point or in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And I will provide a copy.
Thanks to you and MRA.
Thanks, Dylan. I'm going to go straight to the back. Mr. Fornell.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you always for your time, I always appreciate it, Peter Fornell is my name. I've got three quick points I want to make with you here. The first thing I want to do is dispel one statement that was made earlier during the application presentation, and that was regarding onsite parking units. I just want to let you know that you're not going to be the only person that's going to have managed all of their parking units on their site as. I managed a hundred percent of my parking units on my site at the Airport Business Center, including additional guest parking, so. Let's not pat ourselves on the back too quickly for stuff like that. The next thing I'd like to talk about is the reduction in units size, unit size. In the three projects that I've completed of affordable housing, all three projects had a reduction in floor area of each of the units. For a variety of reasons, some were the fact that there was additional amenities, some of it had to do with. With their geographic location being so close to town, but nevertheless. Of those thirty-five properties that I've, front doors that I've built. Two have sold over those last fifteen years, and that is a pretty strong indication to me. That the people that are living in them are satisfied with the space that they've gotten, they're happy. If you did a twenty percent reduction of the units from the APSHA standard by providing the amenities and so forth required in order to accomplish that task. And you took twenty percent of the size out of that building, you'd house the same number of people for eighty million dollars less. So, you know, it's nice that you want to build these things to the size that APSHA says. Believe me, if you drew out a square of a twenty percent reduction of APSHA's requirements, you'd likely be happy living in it too. So I think you need to think about that, we could have a smaller building and the same number of people there. The ten-year vested rights program that you've got in mind here. You know, you've all sat here and listened to private sector applicants come to you and say they want a ten percent vested rights. And we've all developed a little disdain for the applicant who comes in and makes that request, and the reason for that is because. We've come to learn, it's been a difficult lesson, but we've come to learn that generally speaking, these are people that have got. A partially cooked product, and they don't have their money together, and the reality is that they're trying to get a product that they've got ready-made and go out and sell. This doesn't smell any different to me here, all right, if you guys want to do this deal. Wait until you're ready to go, wait until you get your money in place. And wait until you've got a plan in place that you don't have to amend, you know, between now and ten years from now. Economics and market circumstances could dictate an entirely different product to be needed there. A three-years vested right for your project is sufficient if a three-years vested right is what you expect out of the private sector. And then the last thing that I want to tell you about is, you know, there hasn't been anybody come in and to make an application to build a product. Like those that I've built under the Affordable Housing Certificate Program in quite a while. And part of it is because of land costs, part of it is because of construction costs, and and the cash and loom number is not keeping up with it. If you take the, if you take the eight, the four hundred million dollars that you want to spend to build this project. And you divide it by four hundred and seventy-seven occupants at that property, that's almost nine hundred thousand dollars per FTE. The current cash and loom number at category two is three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. How do you expect anybody from the private sector to come in and build a product? And have it be feasible when you're not keeping up with its cost of creation? And when, and when an applicant for a private sector project comes in. And says that they want to pay cash and loom because there's no certificates in the marketplace, and you tell them yes. What you're saying is you're taking four hundred thousand dollars for something that costs nine hundred thousand dollars, and you know it. Which means that the other five hundred thousand dollars is coming off of the backs of the citizens of Aspen, so. You'd have projects happening if you were keeping up with your cash and loom number, the reason that you don't have projects coming now is because you're not doing it. And we wouldn't be waiting for ten years for new projects to happen if you were properly incentivizing the private sector to do those projects. And then the last thing that I have to say is, is I don't see a real difference in what zone district you call this. Over the course of the moratorium, you made affordable housing a use by right in all of Aspen's zone districts. So you can call this any zone district you want, plus it's going to be a P D anyway. So, you know, give it the, give it a zone district that allows those other uses that don't cause you to be a spot zoning. And just build affordable housing as it is a use by right in whatever zone district you call it, I wouldn't get too upset about. Trying to figure out what zone to call all this. But most importantly, I think you need to look into these reductions in unit sizes and what their real availability would be and the. And the decreased cost of this overall production with the same number of employees housed, I think we're not done looking at this yet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and Council, for the record, I'm Alison Bechtesh, I'm the Public Affairs Manager with the Aspen Chamber Resort Association. So I'm here today representing our seven hundred and fifty members who are businesses, and that includes the majority of the seventeen thousand person workforce that makes up Picking County. I did submit public comments, which I believe you have in your email, I did not see them in the packet. To summarize, we commend the council for identifying affordable housing as a primary goal. Your quote, to recognize the urgent need to create a high-quality, sustainable, lived-in community. The lumberyard affordable housing development embodies the council's vision. We believe a yes vote on ordinance ten today is a concrete step toward implementing the Affordable Housing Strategic Plan. A testament to your commitment to the future of Aspen and allowing the workforce to make their lives here. I want to make sure you're considering the future residents of this space, our workforce. The majority by far are not currently housed in the APSHA housing system. Our members report that the number one reason given when an employee leaves their job is because they lost their housing. To give you an idea of what we're up against, I pulled out today's classifieds of which there are five total rentals listed. So even if everything was affordable, we have a issue of availability. There's a two-bedroom, one and a half bath for twelve thousand five hundred dollars a month. There is a one-bedroom, one bath for five thousand five hundred and fifty dollars a month. There is an available two-bedroom, two-bath. For six thousand dollars a month, the other two don't list their rates. So I did the math, if you're willing to have a roommate and grab that two-bedroom, two-bath on six thousand dollars a month. You better be making at least a hundred and eight thousand dollars a year, you are choosing to have a roommate, and that's an option for one year. So I just want you to understand who, what the market is, the people that work in Aspen are losing their leases every day. And then they go to look for something else, and that's what they're finding, that is a hundred and eight thousand dollars a year, and by the way, it's a hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year if you. Want that one-bedroom, one-bath for five fifty is well above our average median mean salaries to make this town run. We believe that fiscal responsibility in this case is honoring the millions of dollars, years, and community time spent getting to this point. Duplicating the process, you'll find the same thing, Aspenites want to belong here. They want housing that honors their humanity and that means space and their contributions to the workforce and the economy. We love private business, we are mostly made up of them. As we know, private development prioritizes profit and public development prioritizes people. Please place the workforce that is set to benefit from this project as your top user group. Your top stakeholder in determining this vote, it's their. It's their voice that those 200 pages of public comment in your packet represent. I do want to submit this, I did submit this in the comment, but I want to mention again, when surveyed, the majority of our members said they want a way to buy into creating workforce housing. So please consider future funding models that allow our local businesses to be part of that solution. In simple economics, the lumberyard is a retention tool. To keep Aspen vibrant enough to reach your other goals, the number of early childhood centers or affordable eateries will become irrelevant if you are shipping out your community at quitting time. We know you sit at this table because you love Aspen and the people that make this ski-town a hometown. We appreciate your commitment to this community and your consideration today.
Thank you so much. Did you see how many "help-wanted" ads were in there?
More than five.
I think it's more than five.
I wonder if that's related.
Yeah. Thank you, Alison.
I live in Aspen, 41 Trainers Landing. I'm here to speak on behalf of an approval for this Ordinance 10. I, when I moved here, there was no qualification required. You could just live here and not have a lot of money and work a number of jobs, but take a lot of time off and enjoy life. That boat seems to have sailed. What attracted me to Aspen, other than, you know, the mountain and the place, was the people I met. And the people I met 40-plus years ago are still friends of mine, and the people I've met since then to now become friends regularly. I hit a tree in '99, and life changed for me, and I had to go to work like a real job. Luckily, the city hired me, and I've been here 24 years and three days. From now, I'll be 24 years. In two, I can't remember the year, but when Burlingame came online, I was volunteered to give some info about accessibility, because city had built some projects that weren't accessible. And to have your life turned upside down and try and come home, they don't let you come home until you can come home to a place. I advocated at Burlingame for accessibility. It's important. We did that pretty well in Phase 1. Phase 2, we have the adaptability to make accessibility, energy efficiency, parking. I mean, I almost brought you my binder, because I still have it, from 18 months of co-op, is what that project was about. We developed a solid project that was phased over time and morphed over time from ranch vernacular, because the Lipton and Zoline didn't want, they didn't want to address the need that we had for housing at the first phase, and by the second phase and third phase, you'll see three-story buildings that are housing more people. We could have done that in Phase 1, but we had some angst against it. So I spent the time on that. I think Burlingame is a success. I think when this phase is done, over time, I'm not sure. I think money came up then. We didn't have money either. But what you have now is 236 units that'll house a lot of people, and every one of them psyched. I was on the fireboard for a couple of years, two terms. We asked the voters for money to build housing. We had land banks and property out at the North Forty. We put together a project for 18 units. We had to go to the county, because we're a special district, but not, we still had to answer to the county, to a commissioner. Each one said, "We're all for employee housing, but we'd reduce your project if we could." It didn't sit well with me. We had an impact. We had to do studies on the highway. They delayed us probably six to seven months, cost us an extra half-million dollar, reduced three units. We got 15. All-electric, parking was an issue. We spent a lot of money to put parking underground, so we didn't affect any other of the dense neighborhoods in that area. It's done. Those people are very happy. So I just implore you that housing is an issue. Qualification for these people, they have to live for four years before they get the chance to put a bid in for one unit, which is about 100 people per unit nowadays, from everybody I talked to that's applying for a house, because that's really the only option, based on her numbers as well. I mean, I won't tell you, I spent $300 a month when I moved here, and it was like, well, I could find better than that. You know? I lived in an attic on Hopkins. I lived in a, you know? So those chances are gone. This chance is really, what I'm hoping for is a 5-0 vote from this new council, unified to, and I got the chance to work with this team, and this team is thorough. They ask every question. They answer every question. They ask it again, answer it again. They narrow it down, they focus it. It's hard for them to tell you how much information they've got. It's amazing. So I don't think you'll find a question that hasn't been asked twice, answered three times, scrutinized by planning. Everything I told them about where we're going with our building code, on efficiency, fire-resistant, everything, already incorporated in this project prior to our adoption. I mean, you got, this is like a touchdown. This is, this is so easy to afford this. And then one other thing, and I'll get out, because I went and saw Reinhold Messner this year over at the institute, and someone at the end of the day asked him, "How'd you accomplish all the things you've done?" And he said, you know, I'm paraphrasing, but he said, "Small steps. I took small steps. I just put one foot in front of the other and made small steps." And I think in this case, this is one small step towards our goal, to have more people that can learn to be cool in Aspen. And if they don't have that, and it's Down Valley in my world, but it's okay. I, you know, I have a lot of friends that live in Annie Mitchell, and they ride their bike, they got e-bikes, they rarely drive, because they don't want to get on that highway. Another stoplight isn't going to change anything. When I moved here, there were three stoplights. One at Aspen Street, one at Mill Street, and one at Monarch. Now, there's like 20 before you get to Elgabel, and you wait three lights. And if you've been down there, I don't go down much, there's four-story buildings everywhere. So, this is a really, an opportunity for the city of Aspen to build something real, bring people to town, people that qualified and lived here for four years. You're going to take them off the highway, you're going to take them off somewhere. You're going to save fuel, energy, carbon, just by building it immediately. And if 10 people drive, I bet you 25 won't. So I just implore you, 5-0, let's get this thing done, and let's worry about the money later. Money doesn't mean that much to us. We'll get it worked out. And you guys, we'll figure out a way to get it paid for. But first, we've got to have something, and that's what tonight is about, I think. Thank you very much.
Are there public, yep, in the back?
This is a pretty cool chance to be on this side of the table.
Oh, wait, it's you!
And who knows, maybe I'll be some future commenting as well. Appreciate all the time you guys are putting into this, and staff certainly. It's been a long struggle getting here, and I appreciate the opportunity for a public comment. There has been a lot said. You know, as I was leaving council, we were dealing with the state of Colorado legislatively, dealing with the statewide housing crisis. And it got to such a point that they were prepared to strip local governments of their land-use control and upzone every property along a transportation hub, and allow free-market ADUs to be placed on every existing single-family lot with a off-street parking, not requiring an on-street, excuse me, on-street parking, not off-street. And you could place that ADU closer to your next-door neighbor's bedroom window than your own. There was no standards about how to, how to really make it affordable. It was just a developer's hope that if we just unleash growth throughout Colorado, we will eventually solve the affordable housing prices. That was narrowly defeated in the last couple of days of the session, but that is the magnitude of the problem for affordable housing throughout the state of Colorado. And they'll be back with legislative efforts next year. It'd be nice for Aspen to be able to say, "We're working on that. We're tackling it, and we're not resting on the laurels of what past councils have built." When, I've had some time at different tables, but when Melia Klanderud beat me for the mayorship by a number of votes in the 40s, she didn't begin to redesign the Wagner Park restrooms. They were designed by a prior council, but she moved them forward. She also didn't start to try to redesign the arc. She put everything she had into making sure it was funded and built and there to satisfy community needs. And so, as one generation of council members succeeds another's, it's really not about undoing past work. It's about how do you continue it, and you do it in a timely fashion. Housing is a crisis that every business in this town, potentially every nonprofit and every government, is facing. The shortage of workers is severe. Now, if I was a selfish person, I'd ask you to turn down the lumberyard, because I would like to be making $30 an hour real soon, because that's where this town is heading. And I don't know how many landlords can afford that with the leases we have. But you have to simply look at the demographics of the rest of the valley, knowing that probably 60%, maybe more, of our workforce comes from the free market of the Down Valley. And most of those free-market homes are, owners are appraising retirement. They're not going to be selling their homes to the same workforce that used to supply our community. My partner at Aspen Activities during advertising distribution had bought a home in Carbondale in 2007, stretched real hard, borrowed money from the folks, pulled from his retirement, got roommates, got a $420,000 house. He sold it this past summer, since Carbondale's changed so much, for $1,003,000. So I don't think you're going to see anyone performing that sort of level of work in our community buying nice little homes in Carbondale anymore. And if you look at the rental rates as far out as Rifle and Silt, they're pretty far along. I think a lot of our workers are already finding nice jobs in that big shopping center and activity center they've created in Elgabel, and the other ones they're creating in Carbondale. And so if you really want to think about the future of Aspen and a workforce, I would really think that we need to move this forward now. I have one other kind of little arc story to tell. When I was convening the group of private donors and people to work on adding the ice rink to the arc, Harry Teague did some initial designs for us, kind of the spine design with the rink on one side, and he came back and told everyone it was going to be about $6 million. And the private funders went nuts. It's like, that can't cost $6 million to build an ice rink. So we got another designer, and you know what? It cost $6 million. At the end of the day, it still did. So I don't think we're going to see particularly lower construction prices anytime soon. I don't think the delay will bring the prices down much. I'd like to talk a little about livability, because while we think of a two-bedroom as maybe two adults and one child, we have a lot of two-bedrooms with three children in them, you know? Livability and cutting off another 100 square feet is not a great deal. And I don't know why, I'm thankful that Peter's tenants who have bought those units, the ownership units, are happy there, but I'd like to say they're really not allowed places for them to have moved to, should they have not liked the space that they had. I live in 740 square feet at an old Hunter Creek rental, used to be Silver King Rentals, rather, excuse me, and with one bathroom. And I think it gets pretty tight when you have three people in there, let alone a couple kids. So I would not be reducing sizes on those things. I've heard an awful lot about cost, and I think that that's really important. I still don't understand why one individual paid $74 million for one acre at the top of LeFoune to build a hotel, but I'm assuming he's going to need an awful lot of employees to run that. And I look at all the buildings that are closed in Aspen right now that are not drawling from our limited employee pool, and wonder where the employees will come for those businesses once they do reopen at Main Street Bakery, and Bamboo Bear, and the Crystal Palace, and the Old Red Onion, and all those businesses that are closed. So I think you're going to be seeing an awful lot of new demand for new employees. I think it's very important that the city council approve this project now with these entitlements, because when you have the entitlements, you're in the driver's seat to say, "Well, we're going to put all that work over here and hope somebody comes in and offers us the money to design the project they want, the way they want it." You're at their mercy. You're at the mercy. You need to stay in the driver's seat. You need to have the control. You know, entitlements do get changed, and they can be changed, and that's not a bad thing. The Burlingame entitlements were changed to increase the density there, after the initial stage, which Dennis spoke about, which we had put full visitability into that. But, you know, if that project needed to be reduced or needed something else, you can work through plea and Z and the standard process to change your entitlements, just like any other developer does. There is simply no business in this community that is not cutting hours, or asking people to do double shifts, or is cutting services, cutting programming, because they can't house, they don't have the workers. The city has over $28 million of land costs into this project. Some were expended during Mayor Ireland's time in office for the site. Others were expended by the past council to buy the access and the mini storages, and I think it's time to move those sort of things forward. When I was young, it took me a while to know that doing the opposite of what my parents wanted wasn't really necessarily what was good for me or what I wanted. And I think that it's important to know that doing the opposite of the worst, the last council, is worse for this community. It is not, it's not necessarily helping anyone move forward quickly. I think the prices will be the same later. I think you'll find you've lost control of your project. And I think vested rights are very important to extend for a good period of time, both to attract the businesses that you would like, to have time to work out partnership agreements and contracts, to be able to phase this project appropriately, to be able to oppose, obtain grants, to pursue granting, things like that. And I would say that there's an awful lot of times when conservation projects, when land has been conserved, or other issues have come forward where more than three years is granted, and I think that that is appropriate for this time. I know there's no such thing as a perfect project, anywhere, anyhow, anyplace, but this is a very solid project. It's as good as it gets, and it's desperately, desperately needed. All you have to do is look at the retirements that are happening in the rest of the valley, and they're well-deserved, and those people deserve every profit penalty they can make as they sell their homes, but they're not going to be replacing our workforce. And Down Valley communities are not interested in building for a commuting workforce. To the extent they're extracting any mitigation units from their developers, they're requiring that they be rented only to workers in their community. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it, and I'm going back to work now.
Thanks, Rachel.
Thank you, Rachel.
My name is Lori O'Hara. I'm a full-time resident of the Aspen Airport Business Center. I'm here on behalf of myself and a number of my neighbors, and we just like to put our community on your radar screen with respect to the impact of this project on our neighborhood. There are approximately 500 full-time residents that live in the AABC. It's not just an industrial area. And we're in particular concerned about this access road, the new frontage road that's going to be coming in directly through our neighborhood and channeling traffic to and from the lumberyard project. So, we don't have sidewalks in the AABC. I mean, very, very limited sidewalks. What we have is incomplete and are not regularly maintained during the winter. I talked to Brian Pettit from Picken County, and he told me that the county really doesn't have the resources to maintain an urban type of area. They mostly have rural areas that they maintain with snow removal, plowing, plus they have a labor shortage, so our sidewalks weren't shoveled pretty much all winter. We don't have crosswalks, we don't have lighting, people walk to the bus stop, we have children riding their bikes. And I guess we just ask you that when you're considering this project, this new road, 400-plus new cars, plus the heavy construction equipment that's going to be necessary to build this project, as well as all the cars in the future that'll be required to go in there and maintain... to go in there and maintain such a large project and the services that they'll need, delivery services, Amazon drivers, everything else, that you consider the traffic and the pedestrian safety in our little neighborhood and work with the county to make sure that we are safe and as pedestrian-friendly as possible. One of my neighbors was on the Zoom call last week and wanted to make public comment, but she wasn't able to be here today. She had to work. And so she has sent an email, and we didn't see it in the public record. So she asked me to bring copies to you all today, and she very eloquently expresses some of our concerns for our neighborhood. So if I may, I brought copies for everyone in the council, and I also have.
I think we probably have it, but if you just leave it with the clerk, then we'll be sure to see it. But I think it is in our email. It just couldn't be included in the packet because of when it arrived.
Very good. Well, thank you for your time and consideration.
Yeah, could you state your name again? I didn't get it.
It's Lorraine O'Hara, O apostrophe D, capital H A R A.
And which, if you don't mind me asking, which units do you live in?
Alpine Grove.
Is that Peter's development? Is it their one?
I'm not sure.
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Got one in the back, then I'll come over to this side.
Hello, council mayor. My name's Lorenzo Semple. And I live in employee housing, and I just want to speak my full-throated support for this project. I kind of envision this as a good urban planning. The lumberyard, in terms of how it interfaces with the nodes of the ABC, you have the bakeries there, you have the restaurant, you have the bar, you have a bank, you have a car wash, you have... When people need to go on vacation from the lumberyard at the end of the ski season, they simply pack their rolling suitcase and they walk over to the airport. There's a lot of really positive aspects to this development. I kind of envision on a busy workday, when there's a lineup coming into town and the people are sitting in their cars, the people in their cars can see a stream of bicyclists driving, riding into town and using that bike path. I, I know this project is not without problems, and people have grievances towards it, as we've heard and as we've also read in the, in the paper. But I think this is an important kind of continuance of Aspen's history with employee housing. I think that the council will be able to look back at this in terms of being a legacy project that you guys can be really proud of, that when you go to other communities, and say you're from Aspen on the council, and you talk about employee housing, which really is the envy of a lot of other communities, that you will be proud to, to, to have, to have approved this and, and to be a part of that. With that, I'd like to just thank you guys once again and really thank the, the city planners who have put in what I feel is a painstaking, detailed, really, really detailed project and left no stone unturned. And I just want to thank you guys for your time, and I hope you approve this project. Thank you.
Thanks, Lorenzo.
This side, Joel? Sorry, David.
Thanks, everybody. And thank you for your time today. I really appreciate it. My name is Joel Lee, and I'm an Aspen resident and have been for twenty-three years. I've met a few of you on council, and I can tell you I voted for each of you. I was not planning on speaking today, and so I apologize if I'm a little nervous. But when I walked in and I saw the project team still talking and continuing their perfect narration of this perfect project as I sat in on the last meeting, I was so impressed by the work this team not only put into the project, but into the persuasive presentation. The positive adjectives, the dramatic pauses, and the different roles each played. I put the work up against Theater Aspen. It was really, I was ready for the orchestra and the possible violins to play along to this impressive performance. Then to continue once again today, after starting the presentation a week ago, going all the way back to two thousand and six and telling you, the council, how hard they worked every stop of the way with each and every group, from the airport control tower to the one-day traffic study they did, to the community outreach meetings they had. I only bring this up because I see through this. When I hear convenient access to multi-modular transportation, I see in here buses, diesel exhaust. I see our overcrowded bike racks with bikes that have been abandoned, parts that have been stolen, and no room in storage for them to go anywhere else. I also realize that biking is only half the season. It's in the summer. It's idealistic. But we are in Aspen. There's a lot of snow, and it's just not quite a reality for half a season. So when I see the renderings of the community space, I also see children's toys left outside. I see poop bags left from unregistered service dogs and excessive HOA costs from irrigation costs and lawn maintenance. Forgive me, council. I'm not trying to sound negative. Everyone can back employee housing. I want to make our community better and strive for cohesive living, making the Aspen picture-perfect mountain town that we all know and love. All I'm asking is that you listen and understand of the reality of this project. Years and years of dust, trucks, heavy machinery, hammering, drilling, and more traffic. Buildings that would be taller and as tall as anything else in Aspen's core. To say that these won't affect views is simply a lie. Then to gloss over any sort of issue with the airport noise and gas fumes. Notice none of the renderings include the airport's idle area, the place where the planes warm up every morning and wait for the planes ahead of them and get de-iced as the FFA requires each engine to be fully thrust. I'm not kidding. Around, with around two hundred planes taking off and landing most days, this is a real problem. I don't care if they tell you it meets guidelines. I insist that we get further details on the real impact of the airport to the wonderful fabric of this harmonious community. I also question the validity of the one-day traffic study done as there is a bottleneck crisis if we're going to throw that word around going on directly in front of this proposed project. They've stated this project wasn't done in a vacuum, and I, I slightly disagree. Three quick things. Cars. Community said that they would not live here without cars. You know why? It's because everyone drives. It's just a fact. I wish that everyone biked and bust. It's just not the case. I live right there. I live behind there, and no one bikes every day to town. Density. It's simply too dense for this space. John McBride had a vision of this space, and it's meant for industrial use in the city of Aspen to have a vibrant industrial zone. This project will add overwhelming problems of parking on the streets of the ABC, adding double to the traffic and onto the streets of the ABC that currently doesn't have street names, speed limit signs, or even lines for lanes. This infrastructure is not built for the density of this project. Cost. Three, cost. I'm not a numbers guy, and I'm not sure the bottom line of this project, but what I'm seeing is four hundred million. I'm just not totally sure why this shortage of workers falls upon a taxpayer's responsibility. I'd be curious to hear how many businesses, shops, and hotels have gone out of business due to this crisis. Crisis is defined as a time of intense difficulty, trouble, or danger. I beg of you to realize this is not intense, and no one is in danger. If this project goes through, there will still be restaurants looking for bussers. There will still be hotels looking for housekeeper, keepers, same as now. Housing is an issue everywhere. All this project does is add to traffic, higher taxes, aptias, questionable due diligence, fire protection, on and on and on. So to end, please consider the density, the height, and the cost of this project. And to follow up, I think that they are pulling the wool over our eyes just to an extent. This is not an accurate view from the Annie Mitchell. The traffic study is not accurate, and there is no way tenants will not be affected by the, the noise and pollution by the airport. I live in this area. I love this area. I love my town and the mountains. Please, on behalf of my neighbors, the families in the ABC, and the wildlife on Deer Hill, understand the reality of this project. Consider the community that's involved and the due diligence that shows both sides of the facts. I live on four point six acres with sixty people, thirty-six units. We are currently dealing with a large, with large building costs, upkeep, parking problems, issues with neighbors, dogs, trash, leaks, building damage from construction. Again, last, last word. Bring on housing, bring on the lumberyard, but please consider the density, height, and cost. We're talking ten years of hammering off my building, off of my balcony, and I want it to be right. Please think long-term. Thank you.
You live in the Annie Mitchell units?
Yes.
Pasco Lane.
All right, David, do me a favor. Keep it under ten minutes, please.
Has it not ever been?
He did it for four hours.
Is this on? Yep. My name's David Guthrie. I had some experience trying to get a project over near the Smuggler, or the trailer park. And, sorry, I got a little dimension. I'm kind of nervous. And we, we went ten or six or eight, I'm not sure, meetings to get a chance at having twelve or ten units. And that was Ted Guy's, Ted Guy and mine, my first and only stab at, at affordable housing. Because every, you know, when people in the trailer park were screaming at me, I said, okay. And then Max Merle forgot that it was a, you know, anyway, they, they had the last, last call. And, and we lost, and I was stunned. And I couldn't believe it because I was a believer in affordable housing, and I still am today. But we can't just keep going. And I, I just want to say, if we are, great. I want to have, the childcare thing is a really strange thing. We need to have the childcare building there fixed almost before the damn project goes because it's going to fill up like that unless... Light testing, you know, I'm sitting here looking at this, and I said, I, it's going to be all those lights going across the front that are, you know, above the, the berm. Just a couple of things, because I know that's going to happen of some sort. And I heard flooding. I don't understand what flooding is. You know, there's a, there's a note about the flooding on this side of the property. Down Valley, is, are people just going to go and put two hundred more cars in? I don't really necessarily agree with Rachel or anybody that thinks that we need it, we need it, we need it. We've, we can get it, but just this number is big. And I, and I'm, I've been on some big projects. Nothing is comparable to this. And I did a project at the corner where the White House on the corner down the street from my house. I was a project manager, and it was fun. It was great. And it was in the right place and the right size. And so what am I supposed to say? You know, I just, I wrote down a bunch of stuff, but that's enough. And I just would love to see it, but not as big and not as convoluted. And there was a lady named Dee who's, who was, she wanted to, she preserved that little thing that says, oh, never mind. I can't, I can't speak anymore. Thanks.
Thanks, David.
Thanks, Dean. Other members in room? Other members in room who want to speak tonight? In the back?
My name is Mick Ireland. I lived here forty years, spent nineteen years in public service, live in affordable housing. Twenty-six years seems like a long time, but by Aspen standards, it's an expedited review process. The majority of you came to my house, came to my kitchen, or came to me on the street and told me point-blank, your number-one issue was affordable housing. You said this to me, not just once, but in multiple campaigns. When the community bought BMC for four point six acres for eighteen million dollars, something that would pay for a couple of lots in the West End, Airbnb had yet to inflate its first mattress. We did not know about STRs and their erosion, documentable, quantifiable, of the long-term rental base. We did not know that COVID would drive high-end refugees to our town. All these things happened. But we had already experienced the impact of tax cuts on residential real estate buyers. We saw what increasing income inequality was doing to the housing market here and everywhere. And we understood the demographics of baby boomers reaching the age of retirement and looking for second homes. We correctly anticipated in two thousand and seven that housing would be needed in the long term. Perhaps your metric for assessing the need is anecdotal. We've had some brilliant anecdotes here today and some brilliant writing, I think, from the Bard of Centennial, from Lo Semple and Roger, who are forced to agree about this, from Rachel Richards, from Joe. We've had a lot of this. Look at the metric, look at those anecdotes, though. The doubling of rents that drove two physicians out of town for want of three hundred thousand dollars a year rent. Try to get an appointment with a specialist to see about neurology. That took me five months. To see a pulmonologist, that's three months. And those appointments are with people who don't live here. And I have to go to Valley View, as would you. Look at the inability of Rafta to accept a grant that would have fulfilled a long-term dream of free bus service between here and Glenwood. The grant was out there. Rafta had to turn it down because they couldn't get the drivers to service that grant. A longtime dream. That dream's been around for twenty or more years. Look at Paul Anderson's modest proposal asking help from the Realtors that went unanswered and unacknowledged. The listing recently of a rental for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. There are a lot of good anecdotes. You heard some today. Those are just more of them. My preferred alternative for looking at a problem like this is hard facts and quantified data. The decline in population measured by the census just between 2020 and 2022, we lost two hundred and fifty people. We're almost back to the population we had in 2010 in spite of thousands of affordable housing units and annexation of new territory. The increase in vacant units to an unprecedented seventy percent in the free market. The loss of two hundred and fifty housing units in the past year. The census measures that. They count them. You've lost two hundred and fifty housing units about what you're planning to build here. What you build here would just be status quo, not growth. Given the above, I urge the council to decline the temptation to kick the can of the lumberyard down Highway eighty-two. You'll be asked to put a hold on this badly-needed housing while an RFP is put out to private sector develops. You don't have many undecided lots in the city of Aspen, but you'll be asked, oh, build it closer to town. Build it on the east side. I spend a lot of times with those GIS maps, and I can spend time with you if you want to look at vacant lots. There are hardly any. And there are nothing you could afford, and the inefficiencies of scale would just reinforce what we said in nineteen ninety-three in the AACP. And what we said then was, we need affordable housing. And it's not going to be pretty pink Victorians. It's going to have to be some kind of massive development. Maybe not overly massive, but concentrated development. No matter how you feel about the merits of the Bard of Centennial's case about Centennial, it's important to remember that Centennial was designed by world-class architects who were the star of Montreal Expo and needed city, and ultimately needed city help for financing. It didn't turn out so well because the city, then the county, did not carefully control the project, which is something you can do by approving the entitlements and entering into some kind of lease with a builder. Burlingame one and two were also RFP productions with some unhappy results that resulted in litigation. I was there for that. And don't forget, the private sector dragged the community through six years of litigation called Meyerstein one and Meyerstein two, you can ask Catherine for the details, in an attempt by a subsequent, subsequent owner of the property to avoid keeping their P in the PPP. I recommend the council maintain control of the project by obtaining the entitlements, doing the infrastructure. doing the infrastructure, and managing the construction process to a high standard. I don't think this council, I don't think its management team would allow the thin walls that made Centennial a noise nightmare and a long-term problem. Same at Burlingame, same at Castle Ridge. On completion of those steps, I'm certain the council could then sell the project, or lease the project, actually, for the value of the rental stream and results in housing credits. The rental stream, think about it. The typical rental now in an apartment in housing is $1,800. You're going to build 295 of those. That's about $300,000 a month. With a capitalization rate of 4%, that yields you $100 million. That's a good start toward your financing. And that's in addition to the other plans offered by the city for financing this. You can sell a rental stream. It's done all the time. With the average, well, I did that. But selling rental streams is done all the time. There are venture capitalists all the time looking to buy rental streams. They're buying up most of America's housing that goes on the market now. You could retain control with a lease and sell the rental stream. There's also the possibility of affordable housing credits going forward over a long period of time. People will build new things. They'll remodel, they'll demolish, and you have control and you could allow a private sector partner to avail themselves of those valuable assets in the same way that Peter Fornell has done. This is a project that needs to go forward. It does not need to be shaved and shaved and shaved again. During the last two council elections, we heard about 500 units, 400 units, maybe 360. We're down to 277. I'm sure there will be pressure to cut it some more, just as we did at 488 on Castle Creek when a single person came in and objected to an extra floor on 488. Four units gone. We keep shaving and cutting, shaving and cutting. And meanwhile, as all of your, just about all of your testificents said today, you are losing your community. It's draining away. Most of the babies in this town that are born in Aspen are born in affordable housing. There are entire places on the map where you mark red for being either child-free or baby-free, and those are growing. Between Mill Street, Main Street, and the river is practically a Red Sea of vacancy. There aren't kids, and there aren't babies. And what kind of community can talk about having sustainability if you don't have a next generation? We talk about child, creating childcare. I'm almost done, Tony. Just one sentence, please. We talk about childcare, but are we going to have any children to care for? That's something you face. So, I implore you, move this along. You have plenty of time afterward to look at financing, to look at PPPs, to look at the unit mix. All those things can be done. But there are people now who would like to be part of this community and who are, in their working days, an important part of this community. They belong here. And you, you who have said so many times and so many campaigns that affordable housing is your number one issue, need to move this along and not put it out for delay because to delay is to deny. Thank you.
Thank you, Mick.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Mick.
Thanks, everyone. My name's Alan Harvey. I'm a resident of Carbondale. I grew up in Aspen. I lived here in 1978 when Midland Park was built, the first affordable, deed-restricted affordable housing in Aspen, and nobody wanted to buy it. The demand now is just incredible. It's a very different thing, and I think that's worth considering as you do unit counts and talk about who you're supporting. Because there's a lot, there's a big line for most of the affordable housing in this community. People say I won the lottery, and it's, it is the lottery, literally and figuratively. I was a Carbondale board, I live in Carbondale now. I was on the Board of Trustees down there from 2012 to 2016. I can say that, you know, we up to the, we have a very rudimentary affordable housing requirement with developers. It is to do 25 units or more, 20% of the housing has to be affordable, deed-restricted, and managed through Garfield County's system. And what's, what's happening now is businesses are reorganizing and restructuring and shortening their, their work weeks in order to respond to our employee crisis. One of the most popular restaurants, The Goat, is open five days a week. That's because you can't find enough employees. The Silo Restaurant has given up table service. You come up to the counter and order now because they can't find enough. These are the kinds, so basically the message I'm getting across to you, the buffer down there doesn't exist anymore. And I think, you know, there's demand down there with employers who are looking for employees, and there's, you know, hiring people from Newcastle and beyond, as is some of the better-paying Aspen businesses. So I just encourage you to really kind of think about this broadly. As someone who grew up kind of watching Employee Housing Program, there's never been a type of employee that it's for. It hasn't, you know, we need this employee more than we need other employees. And I think those two restaurant examples going on in Carbondale exemplify that. So I'd encourage you to keep it wide open. You know, all kinds of people need to live here to make the community work. And I agree that, you know, Aspen's been losing housing. The STD or the STR program is one of the challenges to the housing. The other, you know, the Aspen Times sold recently, and the new owners did not buy all the housing that started getting built up by Bill Dunaway, starting in the 1960s when he owned it. And I worry, as someone who loves that paper, I've sold it as a kid. I was a managing editor there for three years. I was a reporter there for, you know, another four years. The, you know, I worry about that paper. I worry about them being able to fill those positions. You know, a lot of the staff lived in the housing that the Times controlled, and that stuff's gone on the market. I mean, Swift Newspapers kept it. They raised the rents significantly. You know, one reporter moved down to Glenwood because he couldn't afford to pay the rent here and be a reporter. The, and so that's, that's just another example of the way housing kind of disappears here that's been employee housing traditionally for decades, and it's not there anymore. So just consider all of that. And I, this is, I think, a good project, and I know it's a difficult one and challenging one. So thank you for all the work you're doing on this.
Thank you. Tony, are you commenting this evening? Come on up.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, this tablet might just take a moment to kick back on again. Okay. For the record, my name is Toni Kronberg, and I've lived in the Aspen area for 49 years. And all over America, the United States, there's a housing shortage and an employee shortage. So what Aspen is going through is not anything new. In fact, in some communities, when you tear down a single-family home, you can't replace it with a single-family home, you have to build multi-units. I don't think anyone that you heard speak tonight is against this project. You've heard requests from people to say they'd like to see some tweaks and some of the issues with it resolved before it's approved. The council's job is to review the land use application or according to the standards in the land use code. Staff has a scorecard, and staff tonight took some of the criteria and weighed against it. The question I have is, where is the council's scorecard? There was talk about nepotism, conflict of interest. Some municipalities and some of our local municipalities have scorecards so that someone can't bring it to court and say they judged it subjectively, they did not follow their land use code. I would like to recommend that at your next hearing, that you have a scorecard so that when Sam has a question or Tori, you have a question, that you can point to exactly what it is that you relied upon on the land use code. For example, in the section tonight for, underneath General Review Standards, every single one is, has the title of 26.500.070. There's no A, B, C, or D. And that's a criteria that you, as city council members, need to review this land use proposal against. And one of the four examples is underneath B, it says, proposed project supports stated community goals. But there's no list of what are those community goals. I looked at it, and I'm like, well, what are the community goals? And it had a little paragraph that said historically, affordable housing, da-da-da-da, has been supported in the community. But there's no way for anyone, including yourselves, to see how you judged it. So I'd like to recommend, on a legal aspect of it, that you put in a scorecard so that people can take a look at it. Conservation, the conservation criteria, this is another example. There was some talk tonight about, oh goodness, where did it go? What the definition of conservation is. And I pulled it up because it's not in it. And conservation, the zoning for it, and I apologize because I can't pull it up readily right here, is that conservation is a buffer to prevent urban development. And conservation, sure, there's some allowed uses, but there's no buildings allowed on it. You can have like farm animals, crops, things like that. Those are the type of things that help you make your decision, that you have the accurate definition of what a conservation zone district is or what a conservation easement is. Then the third thing that I'd like to bring up is that there's been talk about, does this ordinance memorialize things? Can we change anything? You can't change a thing in the ordinance. That's why you have referendums and why you have initiatives. Take, for example, this building right here, after it was approved by ordinance and by the voters, not one thing changed in it, not one thing. So I'd like for you to keep that in mind. And the community had some good ideas about some tweaks to this building, but that went unheard. But the real thing that I want to talk about, and this is the elephant in the room, is the traffic. And it's the access from this project onto the highway. CDOT, I've been on the phone with CDOT the last couple of days, and I've learned a lot of information. One is that CDOT has not given you a permit yet to build a signalized intersection. You've heard tonight that this agreement was done, what, 2005 and then amendment in 2012? If you look into CDOT's website, it states that any projects that come on board that could change the scale of it can be re-looked at. The signalized intersection, all of the intersections in Long Highway 82 are considered an F. They fail. This particular project is a below an F because it's gridlocked, and it's not for one hour a day, it's for many hours of the day. I believe that CDOT would probably like to see a roundabout at this section. And the fact that this is a City of Aspen project, CDOT is only going to issue a permit, City of Aspen's going to pay for the improvements, it's going to pay for the stoplight, CDOT doesn't have the money for it. CDOT, roundabouts like at Cemetery Lane, Truscott, Owl Creek, would keep the traffic moving slowly. When you take a project of this magnitude, you, and don't do anything about the traffic coming into Aspen, it's hypocritical. Every single goal that you have is hypocritical. What can I say? You think I want to be saying, up here? I would love to be saying, hey, great, go forward with the project. You got the transportation solved, not only for this, but for the entrance to Aspen where 14 hours to evacuate this town in case of an emergency? It's embarrassing. The traffic, the gridlock, the emissions.
Tony, please, if you'll stay on the point of ordinance 10 that we're talking about.
And that is, this has to do with the transportation impact. And the reason why I bring this up is I think you really need to take a look at the access along the whole highway to make this project work. If you haven't, if it's already rated an F, and, you know, I'm not a mathematician.
I appreciate it.
If you take it as an.
I understand what you're saying.
As an F.
I get it.
And then you add another, how many units are there? 486 beds. And you add two round trips, and right now, the city's transportation mitigation is 50 bus, 50 riders on the bus.
Or where?
50 cars and 50 bikes. So does that mean the other 336 people aren't going to work?
No.
So that's, it's a real problem. And there's a solution to it. There is a solution to it. And that is to take a look at the feasibility of an aerial transportation system. And it's not fair to the community and the people that come here and are tourists and the worker bees not to get, get them to where they need to go. And I still, Tori, for the life of me, I can't understand why you're not willing to spend $40,000, that's it, $40,000, on a feasibility study to see if it can work. It is a solution. Look, it's all over the world, these systems are. And I'm one for affordable housing. You know, no one in this room is saying, don't build it. But I think that that intersection needs to be addressed. And I think that a scorecard needs to be done so that you don't have.
Thank you.
What did you say or what didn't you say?
Yep.
But thank you.
Thank you so much.
And if we have a CDOT representative come up and talk about this access plan, because it's not CDOT's work, it's the City of Aspen's work, and they just issue the license. And one of the things that I gleaned from the conversations that I've had is that it could be risky to go ahead and approve this project without knowing if you have an approved permit for the intersection. But other than that, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other members of the public this evening? All look online. Sure, come on up.
Won't take up much of your time. My name's Shay, and I run a business for the owners in the AABC. I run Aspen Self-Storage warehouses. One of our questions was, we've been looking at the numbers for, and I understand that this may not be the right place to ask it, but when you look at something that's supposed to be titled as affordable housing, and you look at a price number, and of course, where we live dictates that price number, why is it that we're doing a stick build instead of something that's prefabricated that could be more expedited? I'm just wondering if that's been addressed, and I apologize if I'm late in the question asking and where it's being asked.
Thank you.
Thank you for talking.
Thanks. Let's see, that was the easiest question of all those comments. All right, last call. And online. All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at this time, or continue it later, and bring it back to council table. So, let's see. Can we just get a staff answer or an applicant answer to the last question that was just asked about stick-built versus modular construction and what the plans are here?
Thank you. Approval of the plan development doesn't dictate the means and methods of the construction. The flexibility and, that we described in the application, in things like the FAR, in things like some of the income mix, are built in to provide flexibility for developers who would come along and who had perhaps some different means and methods than we had in mind. And so this project could be physically constructed, either using prefabricated, factory-built modular, could be penalized, could be stick-built on-site, and so there's plenty of flexibility there for means and methods for developers to come along and choose how, how they choose to build.
Thanks.
Just a quick comment. There's a, there's a factory down in Grand Junction. It's a beautiful facility.
It's not out of the possibilities, David, thanks. He was pointing out that there is a factory for some modular construction that's in Grand Junction, and it might be a good option. All right. All right. Let's see, council, we need to talk a little bit about any outstanding concerns, any outstanding questions that you still have. We, I know that we have Sam who started off the meeting earlier with some questions about financing. That is not germane to actually the review we're doing now, but I understand the request for more information around financing. I as well would love for us to fill out a little bit more of that, if nothing else, to inform the public about what we're thinking and what we're doing, and our options and opportunities. So, I know that there is a desire for some of that information. You're interested in a work session on financing?
Also, very interested.
I, I don't see the need for a work session on finance personally.
Okay. Ward?
I don't see the need for a work session on financing before the vote is made on entitlements.
You are correct. It is not a discussion that is directly related to ordinance 10 and its review and its potential approval. But with that, I do support that information. I think that it should be a conversation that's out. I think that we have a lot of public questions around it, and I think that there's some information that we can be shared. So Sarah has been looking at some calendar options. Sarah, you have support from three of us that we would like to have some financing conversations around the lumberyard. Can you just continue to look for that opportunity for a work session? That'd be great.
Does it then make sense, Tori, to, and I say this because I want to be in a position to support this project, does it make sense for us to postpone the vote and potentially even further discussion until after we have that work session?
Yes, but not in the sense that they are not related, right? That is not part of your, your review criteria for what's in front of you of ordinance number 10. So it can be information for you, absolutely. I think that there are other items in here that are more important, that does relate to exactly these approvals that we're going, that I think we need to have some more conversation around. So they'll probably work in harmony there, they'll probably work in tandem, but it'll be up to really what our schedule allows. I'm not interested in a huge delay. I'm supportive of this project. I still have some questions, and I know that the community has some questions. So for me, I'm interested in continuing this to get some of those questions answered, and in that, in that time, maybe we'll have that financing discussion as well. We're looking for our finance director to be a part of that discussion. So with that, what I would suggest here is that we do ask some more of the questions that are outstanding for us. We identify where the five of us still have some issues of concern or question or clarification even, and then we, we bring those back to us so that we can vote with, you know, as much information as we can get. So if that's possible at this time, then I'm going to look around the table for anybody that wants to talk about a couple of items or areas that they have, that they want more information on. My hope here is that we can finish this in about 30 minutes, putting items on the table for discussion and information, and then we can come back to this. John, I'll start.
Tori, could I ask for clarification, please?
Yes.
On the work session for funding and financing, are you looking for that prior to approval or a decision on entitlements?
I am looking, to me, it is not related to the ordinance 10, but the, if we can have the information for ourselves and for the community, that's great. But I'm looking at Sarah to really figure that out scheduling-wise, and if that does not avail itself until afterwards, I understand that. The sooner the better. John?
I'm not sure exactly how I want to start this off. Yeah, I have questions about, that need to be addressed as well, so I do support this project going forward, but my concerns are, we have three big projects that our community is talking about right now. And one is the airport, one is the entrance to Aspen, and one is this large housing project that we're talking about tonight. Because they're all being talked about now, I don't think they should be talked about separately. I think we should be looking at this comprehensively. And I've had the pleasure of seeing Edward Olman's, is not here now, but he was here earlier, he gave Skip and I a presentation about a year and a half ago about his vision for integrated transportation and the entrance to Aspen and some, some of the airport issues. Some of it did seem a little far-fetched, but I thought that he brought some really interesting ideas to the, to the forefront. I've reached out to the BOCC, actually I only talked to one of them, but they are interested in seeing his presentation as well. Like Bill and whoever on this board hasn't seen it, to be right up to speed on it as And with that said, that is, I think, an important piece of my decision going forward with this, is looking at this more comprehensively. We only have an opportunity to do something like this once, and that goes along with the airport and the entrance to Aspen, and we need to get it right, or as right as we can. Thanks.
Thank you, John. I seconded on that. I saw Edward's presentation a couple of weeks ago, and his what-if lab is, he's a visionary, and I really appreciate what he had to show, and I'd love for it to come before us in a work session because he really did think of the interconnectedness between all the things you just mentioned that I think are huge issues facing our community. When it comes to this project, I'm just going to really touch on really quick the things outside of our peer view of the financing, and want to really stress how much I support affordable housing, but there's a priority, priority to it as we show in our affordable housing strategic plan. And one of the main things I really want to get across in the work session is that if we do this project and we pay the amount that it's going to cost, whatever that may be, I don't want it to be at the cost of other things that might be prioritized higher than that, such as expiring deed restrictions of like rental properties and other things that I think are important. I'm done with that now, sorry.
Okay, because that's not, okay. Thank you for clarifying, but that's not what we're talking about right now.
Yes.
We are setting a work session to have that conversation.
Just wanted to state it for the record, thank you. One other thing that might be a question before the last thing I have to say are, I really wonder, and I don't have enough information yet, on whether entitlements should come before or after a private partner is decided. I think that would really help me in this decision-making about understanding the obligation of granting entitlements, and whether a private developer is going to come in and want a bunch of changes that actually delay this project, or make it not as economically feasible so that we can maybe accomplish some of the other things that are on our affordable housing strategic plan, and then.
And let me, let me just, Kevin, I see you taking a few notes there, and maybe the applicant or developer team is as well. In that discussion, if it was possible, around why that's even a conversation, right? I mean, what, what Sam actually is talking about there, what Bill brought up a while ago about what partnerships look like, you know, I'm still unclear as to what those opportunity loss are. I don't know. So I hear what you're saying, but I have no idea if you're, if, 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 if all of a sudden, because my experience of a couple of years up here has been that, I don't see that. I don't see people coming to us for a more advantageous project than what we work on. So I would love if that conversation can include what those opportunities are, what options are we talking about? Just because you get a partner in early does not mean he's going to make a better project for you. So if anybody can help me understand a little bit about what we're talking about there, that would be helpful when we come back.
Absolutely, thank you for that. And then the last point I was making earlier, but I should have saved for now, is on transportation. It's been talked about a lot up here, but 435 parking spaces, a new traffic light, and a bus that only comes every half hour. And then Tom Gorman's letter in the public comments received by council, a P&amp;Z member, but he did it on his own volition, talking about the Fair and Peers report, saying it didn't provide much detail about red light cycles, the report did not analyze the likelihood of a cascade effect, did not engage in a study of time saved by the new lumberyard residents versus time lost for other down-valley commuters, where he did his own math, saying that it might save 6,000 minutes but cost us 15,000 minutes daily with that new traffic light. And there's seven different points in this, but the point I'd like to make is, I want to support this project, but as far as the peer view of the entitlements go, I feel very uncomfortable approving it with us adding a new traffic light that's a letter F, and the fact that we made transportation, transportation and mobility our number one priority in our city council retreat, just to add another F and add more potential transportation woes. I'd almost like another transportation work session or something that would make me feel better about the transportation situation from this project, because I do think, that was all negative, I do think this project is really well-thought-out, really well-done. I do appreciate all the work that's staff and the presentations I've seen, but transportation is really the one thing I need to harp on and like, that makes me uncomfortable approving it this evening at least. Thank you.
Thanks. Sam, I'm going to see if I can add a little clarity around that. You have questions around the intersection, whether that's the prescribed treatment by CDOT, whether that's the best treatment moving forward, but also the number of cars and, and transportation, potential transportation impacts. You're still not comfortable with the study or what you've seen so far, and you would like to have more discussion around it?
Absolutely, especially with the issue that Tom Gorman brings up, and that's in our public comments. And the last thing I would say is, when we went and saw Edward Olman's presentation, that included an overpass that connected with the new airport terminal and made a bus transferium so that it really helped with our mobility, in addition to adding residents at the lumberyard, and I think solved a lot of interconnected issues, which I hope this project can do.
Okay. Any other items on your list for clarification?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Bill, I'll go to you.
Thank you. Like Sam, I want to be in a position to support this project. I understand the need for additional housing. I think our community and our economy has changed over the last decade or more, and we need to adapt to that. I think this is an appropriate, generally an appropriate location for a project of this scale and size. I don't have a problem, a significant problem with the scale of the project, the density, the general number of floors, or the use of this land. I think it's important to acknowledge that we have spent in the range of $4.5 to $5 million to date on soft costs on this project. Entitling this project now springs us forward to spending an additional $2.9 million on infrastructure that I don't think we're in a rush to install. I think that it's much more crucial to get, to address some of these big concerns with this project before we rush that spending, because of that work, we're not getting that money back if we've gotten something wrong, and we won't be able to undo that work. I'm uncomfortable with this relationship of city as applicant and the reviewing body. It doesn't feel transparent to me, it doesn't feel like the city staff has been objective. It felt today, although Kevin did a nice presentation, and I'm sure has spent a lot of time and effort reviewing this project, that it was, that Kevin was advocating for this project and not acting purely objectively. I'm not arguing your points, Kevin, it's just the sentiment that I got.
I'm just going to remind the council in their request that we don't, if they have feedback on staff performance, please don't direct it to an individual staff member, I am your staff member, it needs to be directed towards me. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, I'll restate it, Sarah. It felt to me like the presentation by the reviewing body, which is also the City of Aspen, was not fully objective. I personally, in recent days, have requested information on past studies on vehicular underpasses as an alternative to a new signalized intersection. I have not received that information. I have requested information on the pro forma financials that the applicant referenced multiple times during their presentation, was not provided with that information. I understand that is not generally in the context of seeking entitlements, but this relationship is awkward and does not feel transparent and in partnership with the community. I do believe that one of the advantages of securing a partner early would be that they could lead us through the entitlement process, as was done with Aspen Housing Partners, and was done successfully. And it, I think that would feel a little bit more appropriate, that relationship. I want to talk a little bit about what I believe are the limitations and the issues with entitling this project now versus resolving some of these issues before we do so. And this addresses some of the, I hope addresses some of the questions and concerns that Sam and Tori had. And then I'd like to talk about my specific issues that I'd like to work on. Ward, you talked about maintaining flexibility, and the applicant also talked about maintaining flexibility in these entitlements. I don't think these are nearly flexible enough, and I want to provide a hypothetical situation to illustrate what I mean by this. And this does not mean that I support this hypothetical situation, this is something for consideration. If a developer came to us, a developer partner in a PPP and said, "I'll deliver 200 units of workforce housing for $100 million, but in exchange, I would like 20,000 square feet of commercial space that I own and maintain forever." And they'll be our long-term partner and maintain and develop and build and operate the rental units, but it would mean us sacrificing 77 of the 277 proposed units in exchange for 20,000 square feet of commercial. That is not an insignificant or a small change in the entitlements, but I believe it's something that we should consider and the community should consider. Perhaps it's a worthwhile trade-off. And again.
Free market? Free-market commercial?
Perhaps. And again, purely hypothetical situation, but the, my point is to illustrate the creativity that could come out of the private market, that could really present us with an interesting scenario to contemplate. I don't think that the flexibility built in is nearly flexible enough and provides us with opportunities for very creative public-private partnerships, and I think that a private market developer will be hamstrung in a negative way by these entitlements. If we don't get proposals that are attractive in a reasonable amount of time, we can move forward with it. Perhaps I'm wrong, but I think not trying it now is a mistake. So my biggest unresolved issues with this project, like Sam, traffic, I think that it would be highly irresponsible of us to endorse or encourage or support, facilitate a new signalized intersection there when we know signalized intersections are contributing in a major way to our traffic issues into and out of Aspen. I, I am not supportive of more, of any owners, owned APSHA units at this property, not because I want to penalize anyone or strip an opportunity for somebody to own real estate, because I believe that the lumberyard can meaningfully address some of the issues we have with our local workforce, but I think doing so means that the units should be rental units primarily. And I cannot support one of the whole phases, or I think it's 81 units, as ownership units. I would much prefer them to be rental units. That would prioritize our workforce and really address the issue that we heard so much about by past mayors and council people tonight, in addition to the public. I would like a work session to better understand the financial situation on, on this project, and what our options are to. I would like a work session to better understand the financial situation on this project and what our options are to finance it. Nothing will obligate us necessarily to, to those specific financial situations, but I think it would be irresponsible of us not to understand it better and be able to answer to our community, because I received, and I think many of you did as well, dozens of emails from concerned citizens, almost all of which surrounded the financial aspect of this project. And, and I'd like to be able to provide at least some options that are reasonable and, and practical. So I, I will end with reiterating that we do not need to approve these entitlements now. We can continue to make meaningful progress towards this project, which is overall a good project and important for our community without the entitlements. And, and I think we have one opportunity to get this right at this critical inflection point. Thanks.
Thank you. Ward, do you have some areas that you would like more information on?
Yeah, it's, what do we, what do these entitlements as proposed in ordinance ten? How are our hands tied? What are the limits? I would like to see the possibility of not to exceed or up to language instead of a absolute number of, of units. I, I think that Edward's what-if is, is really, I, I've always called Edward's work, he did a transferium for here as SimCity. But we were, we're at an opportunity here where we have a large project, two large projects across from each other that are at what could be considered a SimCity type of clean slate point. And I would like to know how, in looking at Edward's stuff, and he emailed me today about a couple of observations that I had a couple of weeks ago when I looked at his presentation, that he had some, some prototypes to perhaps address those. I think it'd be beneficial for us to see what his plan is and how, if we were to entitle as it is now, how it might handcuff or affect his vision. I know that his vision required, to retain the unit count required some rejiggering. But I'd like to go into it with a clear understanding of what his, his, what if holistic approach is, if it's feasible. And how, if we go with entitlements as stated now, if we're missing an opportunity that we're gonna, we're gonna kick ourselves in the pants for. I, I, I believe this, I'm, there's so many things about this project that I, that I support. There's no perfect project. There are a lot of, there are some issues here that I wish we didn't have to, to make compromises or concessions to, but I don't see how we can answer our housing needs without making some concessions or some adjustments to height density. Those are two big ones right there, but Dennis mentioned that density increased at Burlingame as the demand increased. You look up and down the valley, density, and, and density is considered by environmentalists as a good thing. I know it's, it's in conflict with the A A C P, but I, I see this as a, this whole project as a exercise in utilitarianism. How can we get the best benefit to the most people? And it may require us to make some concessions and to make some adjustments. But I, I really want to have as much flexibility in this entitlement without tying our hands. And I do think that it would behoove us to have a presentation perhaps with B O C C of Edward's, Edward's work, because it's, it is visionary, and it's something that I don't think we should proceed without seeing what the effects of entitlements are with a, with a visionary plan that could be the envy of the world.
Thanks, Ward. I have a little bit more perhaps that I would be interested in hearing, but I'm hearing some common themes. Obviously transit, mobility, and parking are a commonality for all of us. I think we're all looking for something that is a direct nod to maybe what's coming, not what is, but what's coming. When I say that, I have a couple of questions. For example, the intersection that's there that is C dot access plan, along with losing Sage Way, or at least the intersection at Sage Way. I'm just wondering, you know, what started that discussion? Why, why was the, that location chosen for the light? Was it because of the forthcoming plans that were happening? And I also, actually, I heard Dylan speaking earlier, I think before the meeting, regarding some of the airport side plans, the elimination of maybe the exit road and that, that the airport would actually utilize this same intersection. So I, I need a little bit more information. I don't understand how the C dot access plan was put in place in regards to the lumberyard and the airport.
May I clarify that, Mr. Mayor?
Sure, you can.
As I said, I don't know whether there'll be ingress or egress from the airport. The current document adopted by the city of Aspen, Picken County, and C dot does not address whether there'll be ingress or egress from the airport. It is an unknown factor, not unknown.
Okay. Then I guess I'm just, you know, I, I just don't understand, this is a, I guess the C dot access plan was done in 2012 is what my notes say here. It's eleven years later, different plans are going on, more things are developing, meaning entrance to Aspen, potential work, meaning the airport, and now obviously lumberyard moving forward. So I just don't know how the inner relationship there. I don't, I don't understand it. I'm not stuck on it. I just want you to know, I just want information about it. But I will tell you, when I look at that, I have a couple of questions about the internal circulation that has been delineated in the ordinance. For example, it seems to me that the entrance and exits to two underground parking garages is located on the north side, again, north or west, I don't forget which. But the, both of the entrances are, are on the opposite side of even where the intersection with Highway eighty-two is. So all traffic coming in is going to have to go in and split and drive through in order to get into the, I would like a conversation about that. I don't understand if that's done by necessity of design or not, but to me, it seems like that's placed, you know, on the other side of the development. Maybe there's a, a better circulation plan there. When I say that, I also was noticing on the displays that we had up is that the trash location, or two trash locations were located at the top or the entrance to those parking garages. If those are the only two trash receptacles for the entirety of the complex, that seems to be a little bit far for some people. Maybe the hope there is that they're utilizing the underground garage and they pull up and stuff like that. But again, where those are located, I would like to have a conversation about if that is the best location for access for trash removal. Let's see, other circulation type questions that I had for you, when, when we looked at the building layout that you have, you know, and we've done these, what did we end up on? The hinge or the flange or the?
Hinge.
Yeah. So, you know, at the, at the corners of the hinge is basically maybe where the elevators are located. And just as somebody looking at this, I'm real hopeful that these buildings for the residents feel open, that they don't feel like nineteen eighties-designed corridors, if you will. And so one small question I had was like, are we gonna have, are stairs available? And I don't just mean stairwells, but I mean stairs. Anyway, so questions like that are something that I didn't see and I was, I was interested in. I had questions earlier regarding unit size and mix, so I'd need to know how that fits into our, to ordinance ten and what part of that, again, as Ward describes it, is flexible. If, if there is up to language, if there is not to exceed language available to us, I am, am more comfortable moving forward with a round of these reviews and approvals, knowing that there are, are changes possible, but if we are locking ourselves into things that are not changeable that we may regret later, then I, I would love to see if that flexibility is available for us. I noticed that there was a bike share, two bike share stations, but there was not any car share noticeable to me in those renderings. I think car share should be a part of this in a, in a large effort to reduce the need for individual automobiles. The pedestrian underpass. The pedestrian underpass for the bike route that goes between the A B C and the city. I was wondering, how does that work in conjunction with a traffic light? To me, an underpass would be an attempt at having unimpeded traffic or unimpeded transit. But if the traffic light is already going to go there, then there will be stops programmed into the light. So an at, at grade bike trail, it may be unnecessary to build an underpass. I don't know, but I'd need that conversation because once we sign yes to this, it's moving. There was a comment made about exterior lighting. I don't think that, maybe I haven't done my homework well enough, but I don't think I've really seen a lighting plan in a while. I think, we have one, but I haven't seen it in a while. I want to go back to an early comment about the green berming between the highway and, and, and the project. I don't know if either of you guys have, but you should go out to the Mountain Rescue Building and walk up the tower. It is unbelievable that the noise variation from bottom floor to top is, is quite noticeable. Ground floor stuff is highly shielded from the traffic noise of the highway and the airplane noise as well. As you get up a couple of floors, it becomes more noticeable. But down low, it's, it's really amazing, even in current conditions, how much it is absorbed and muffled. With that being said, that gives us an opportunity, how high can those berms be? What trees, plantings can we do? What's our opportunity with the carports that are on that side? I was wondering even about the carports, if that there was the opportunity for a second level of parallel parking on a carport and moving some of that parking from, from where we've, we've got it planned. But these are questions that I have, and I just don't know the answers because we, we haven't talked through this much detail to this point. This brings me to my last point. I asked some environmental questions earlier, but I still, and I hear this from, from Ward's comments, is I still have my questions around the overall height, the overall massing, and the overall density. In some of our other planning work sessions for this, you know, I, I had asked for the design team to, you know, soften the top corners even. Now I'm looking at this and I'm just wondering about our solar opportunities. We, you know, and I, I'll give you credit, the design is not bad, but that height in our valley is, is reaching new heights. So I would like to have the conversation about our solar and what those opportunities are in order to reduce that extra fourteen feet of measured height or non-measured height for a mechanical and environmental. I'd love to know if there are other opportunities and where those are. You know, I thought that perhaps building two was gonna be most appropriate for the four-story elements that we have. Our four-story conversation originally started at this table with having elements that went to four stories, not four stories across the entirety of the, of the project. It has evolved. You know, we have all recognized that this is an opportunity for density. It may be appropriate here, but again, I just need that conversation, and I need my fellow council members to be in on that conversation as well. I think that covers kind of where I'm at when it comes to reviewing the criteria for the ordinance number ten. I'll say again that my intention here is to build affordable housing at this location. I support it very close to the numbers that we have outlined. I think that maybe if we gave the design team the opportunity to revisit some of these things, that maybe there are some creative solutions that can come back to us that illustrate what this council has said as a body and not just one or two of us. I think that's enough of my comments for right now, but what I need to get to, Ward?
I just want to follow up on your comments.
Yeah, go right ahead.
I mean, we got, you got into the weeds a lot, and I want to know, addressing those weeds, those concerns, those micro concerns. An entitlement process that prevents us from addressing those is, I think it handcuffs us too much. So there's a lot of detail on ordinance ten as to what's, what's prescribed and, and the relationship between the P D and the entitlements. The entitlements, I think there should be more flexibility in the P D for us to make some micro adjustments. As far as the, you know, site plan and the overall entitlements, I, I think we can, I, I would like to see that we go forward, but I want to make sure that if we proceed with the entitlements, that we're not preventing ourselves to make the micro adjustments and the weed adjustments that Tori has pointed out.
So at this time, you know, I hear a couple of things. We have a request for a work session unrelated to ordinance ten. I, I believe a continuance this evening would probably be appropriate with, with some of the information that we're seeking to come back to us. What that means is, we need a team to get us that information. To that end, I don't know where our current contract sits with Cushing-Tarrell, but I am interested in continuing to have them work on some of these items. So I,
It will be necessary for council to authorize additional contract work on next week. This, this was the end of the money pretty much, getting you through tonight's continuance.
So, so with that, I mean, I, I'm supportive of a contract coming back to us for some of this work that we're talking about. Beyond that, I'm also interested in starting to work on draft language for ordinance ten that kind of speaks to what we can approve, what needs to be approved, and that leaves us the ability for us the ability for improving the project as it moves forward. One second, Kate. And then as a fourth point, we have a counselor who is suggesting that if we were to put out the word to a development community, that we might get response that leads us to a more affordable and accomplishable project. I don't really support the idea of free-market commercial, but I also don't know the possibilities for partnership that are out there. So, Sarah, I put those four items in front of you in the hopes that perhaps we can chart a course for the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. What I need clarity on is whether, so what the date certain is, you wish to continue to, and if you wish to have a work session prior to that date.
And if I may, just for clarity purposes, I'm hearing, while there's a nexus between these two issues, I'm hearing issues from a developer perspective, from the applicant's perspective, and then I'm hearing questions from the reviewer's perspective as the council's reviewing a land use approval ordinance. And I, I just want to be clear that I think that some of the developer questions obviously should be handled in a work session. The land use approval questions could be handled by continuing this, and if you want work sessions between, with your app, with your team, that would be appropriate to provide direction to them. But I do think what council is asking, as a land use review board, is for restudy on some of these issues from the applicant team. So, I don't know if that makes sense, Mayor, but what I guess I'm suggesting is a continuance. How much time you think the applicant team needs and not, you know, you could defer to the applicant team to answer some of the questions on the entitlement piece, and maybe provide a restudy to you for consideration, including changes to that draft ordinance.
I would strongly appreciate having the financial work session before we come back on a draft ordinance.
Same.
Ward, you had a comment?
Yeah, I don't know when the next available regular meeting might be, but I, to your comment about a contract with Cushing-Tarrell, I value their team, the team that we've had. I wanted to pull that from the, from the consent calendar a couple of weeks ago. I'd fully support going forward with that, that funding for Cushing-Tarrell, so they have our support, and they know that going forward, they're gonna get paid, because I suspect that they've done some work that hasn't been covered under current contracts. And I couldn't be more happy with the work that Cushing-Tarrell has done. So I, I support that to come back to us, perhaps at the next meeting on the 20th.
That's what it's scheduled for.
Okay, good.
Your regular meeting. We have to finish the scope of service.
It is scheduled for the 20th. If you recall, the, one of the questions was the scope of that contract. So where we're at right now in those negotiations is what you saw already back on May 28th.
And for me, it's, it's not as important to have a work session on financing and funding as it is entitlements and what, how much flexibility we can have in entitlements and how we're tying our hands on it. If we, and I think, before I feel comfortable voting on this, I want to answer as many of the objections from the many emails and concerns expressed by our community. It's been a long process and it's a huge project. It's the largest public works project the city has ever done. And we, if it's a legacy of this council, or if it's a legacy after I'm off a council, I want it to be something that we can be proud of in every conceivable aspect. There will be aspects that we won't be able, that, that we'll, we'll probably not be happy with, but, so where am I going with this? As much, the work session for financing, for me, is not as important before entitlements, but the entitlements have to be as flexible to allow different financial models.
Understood. What we're looking at right now is, and Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong, there might be the possibility of having some of the finance discussion on the 19th?
If you would like to have that conversation next week, it will be very high level. I would, you know, wait for Pete's return to the office for me to have a full conversation with him, and that is on Thursday. So to expect there to be a full review of the 150 fund, because I'm hearing it's not just this project funding, it's the entire 150 fund that some of you are asking for, I would say that's a pretty aggressive turnaround, if you want any detail beyond what's already been published.
Okay. That would mean that we can buy some more time for that by pushing it out. However, we have something called-
Next opportunity is July 10th.
July 10th, because we have Independence Celebration. So, July 10th, and that would mean, the next chance that we would have to talk about the entitlements and ordinance 10, we could continue this item until Tuesday, the 11th. However, that's not a whole bunch of time for work to be done.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, if there were amendments directed to that ordinance, we would need the 20, July 25th as the soonest. We would not be able to issue the amended ordinance in time for public noticing.
Do you hear the timeline that is potential and possible for us?
Yeah, I, I would, I think we could continue this to July 25th, and hopefully schedule a work session maybe on July 10th to cover some of the issues that have been brought up by council members on, on funding, and perhaps, it would really be nice if we could, we could see a presentation of the what-if lab on July 10th. But I would support continuing a second reading of ordinance 10 to seven, July 25th at 5:00 PM, or a different meeting time if, but continue this ordinance 10, second reading to July 25th.
Thank you. I'll take that as a motion.
Seconded.
I'm overseas that week, would really like to participate, so if we can push it a week further, I'd be super appreciative, but-
Do they have internet overseas?
I don't know. There's a time change, obviously.
It would be, the next one after that is-
August 8th.
Are you inquiring about the work session or the regular meeting?
The work session.
The work session is 11th, right? Could be the 17th for the work session.
The 17th is a critical budget conversation overall, that we really can't push further back, but you do have the 24th open, which would mean you're continuing until the first meeting in August.
So, for clarification, Bill, there was a motion and a second to continue this to July 25th for a regular meeting. And your question was not about the timing of the next regular meeting, but a work session?
That's correct.
Okay.
25th is fine.
So, that's not germane to the motion.
Okay.
That's true.
So the motion at this time is to continue ordinance 10 till July 25th, and Sarah, you just said that Monday, the 24th, would be available for the work session discussion, but not 24, 25 like that?
No, if, if you, the only way is if you wish to move this ordinance forward with just minor amendments that you make on the floor. But if you're looking for major changes, including changes to things such as density, height, materials, layout, those are not things we can turn around and sufficiently meet public notice requirements for the packet of regular meeting.
So for the discussion, council, is that the 25th is a tight turnaround time, and going into August is our next opportunity? How do you guys feel? You know, I know that none of us really want to be pushing this and pushing this, we'd like to make some decisions, but I agree with Ward, you know, this is a big deal. You know? So, Sarah, were you saying the 1st?
Your regular meeting is on August 8th. The regular meetings in August are on August 8th and August 22nd.
Just FYI on that, August 8th. I'm in Maine, but they do have internet there, and I have participated from Maine.
What's our, what's our, okay, so I'm, I guess I just don't know what we can, I mean, we haven't even talked to our team about what their capabilities are, what they even can bring back to us. I'm not really, and I guess we've, we've made a bunch of requests for some information, kind of opportunities and options for redesign. I don't think we're calling for a redesign right now, but we're asking for some, some opportunities and options. So I guess I'm a little unclear. Would we be looking at, if we have a work session, or if more work is done where there are items that we can make minor changes to our ordinance and move it through, would those be ready for Tuesday, the 8th? Or would we be able to meet with them prior? No.
The 8th of August?
Yeah.
It will depend on the direction you give us on what sounds like maybe July 24th for work session? That's not quite sorted out yet.
Okay.
You know, in the best of circumstances, we can turn it around in a week. It might be ambitious, depending upon the level of changes that the council would like to see in the ordinance, but certainly, it doesn't prohibit you from continuing it again if we're unable to provide you quality work on that turnaround time.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I-
Withdraw?
No, I would amend my motion to continue to August 8th. And I, I would rather continue, and I don't want a table.
Seconded.
That's amenable to you? All right. We have a motion and a second for continuing ordinance 10 to August 8th. Any further discussion? Can we have a roll call vote for the continuance, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes. All right.
Thanks for accommodating me.
Damn you, Bill.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I think we can take that.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Roll call. We have a motion. Can we have a roll call vote for adjournment, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes. Thank you guys so much. Appreciate you all, appreciate you starting early with us, staying late with us, and hopefully seeing us again.
And not cursing, not cursing our names behind our backs.
All righty.